Twenty twenty, it's six o'clock. This meeting is being livestreamed and it's also being simultaneously shown in the Capitol Television and Channel 21's CCTV media and Channel 21. We will start with the board attendance and I'll go around and please acknowledge your presence. Director Goss.
I'm present.
Thank you. Director Kylo.
Present.
Director Blasi.
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bethel.
Here.
Thank you. Director LePole.
Present.
Director Hyun.
Here.
Thank you. And this is Satya Chandragiri, so covered everybody. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand for that. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
America.
Of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There is no agenda modification today. We'll let's turn this next item of spotlight so over to Superintendent Perry. Superintendent Perry, please.
All right, good evening Chair Chandragiri, Vice Chair Bethel, members of the board. It's great to see you again tonight. And the first spotlight is going to be our community partner of the month. And Sylvia McDaniel, our Director of Communications, is going to present this first spotlight.
Good evening Chair Chandragiri, Vice Chair Bethel, Superintendent Christie Perry, Board of Directors. It's my honor to be able to present this first spotlight on success Assistant League of Salem Kaiser. Our community partner of the month is the Assistant League of Salem Kaiser. They have done so much to support our school district, especially by helping kids in need. And we are pleased to recognize them tonight. Although COVID-19 has forced them to pause some of their programs and modify others, they continue to serve the community in incredibly important ways. The Assistant League's biggest program is Operation School Bill and it continues with modifications today. This program, which has been around since nineteen sixty-two, provides new clothing for students in need. Elementary students are provided with a bag of clothes from socks to winter coats. Middle and high school students get a budget and go shopping themselves. The Assistant League provides clothing to approximately three thousand students each year in the district. Many of these kids rarely have access to new clothing. Through the program, they also help provide dental screenings to approximately ten thousand kids in Salem Kaiser each year. The Assistant League provides support to the dental hygienist and helps coordinate visits and information. They also provide over two thousand Salem Kaiser students each year with new school supplies and backpacks. Many students in need do not have access to the necessary school supplies, making this program especially important during distance learning. In regular years, the Assistance League also helps bring performing art programs into Title One schools. They organize puppet shows to teach kids about bullying, healthy eating, exercise, and more. They also support the Salem Public Library's Bookmobile, which serves all first grade classrooms. We are grateful. We are grateful for the Assistant League of Salem Kaiser's hard work and their dedication to helping students. We want to thank them for their partnership and look forward to many more years of working together. Thank you.
All right, our next spotlight will be presented by Principal Schoper. So he's back for a second month in a row. Principal Schoper, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Perry. Tonight, I'm pleased to honor Tom Strickland, a math teacher for us at McKay High School. Tom was recently awarded the 2020 Area Four Award from the Oregon Council of Teachers of Mathematics as their outstanding math educator. Tom has served as both a teacher and a math coach during his career. He's helped other educators connect with students and improve their own teaching. He has given numerous presentations at both the state and national level about supporting underprepared students, instructional coaching, and more. At McKay High School, Tom works diligently to put these topics into practice in his classroom. He is an energetic and enthusiastic presence, helping students navigate challenging math content. He is passionate about supporting students and making each and every one of them successful. As principal, I have observed Tom work to support both students and coworkers. He regularly opens his classroom as a learning lab for other teachers. He even uses lunches and his prep periods periodically to provide more assistance to both colleagues and students. Tom goes above and beyond supporting staff and students. And on behalf of the McKay community, we are proud of your dedication and your hard work, Tom. Congratulations and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Schoper. Our next spotlight will be presented by Vice Principal Brian Armstrong from South Salem High School. Hi, Brian, good to see you.
Thanks for having me and good evening, everybody. I am so happy to honor South Salem senior Annie Flood today, who is a passionate, talented, and dedicated young woman. Annie's whose right foot was amputated when she was a baby is on Team USA's National Sitting Volleyball Team. Annie started training with the national team when she was fourteen and has already achieved so much. In two thousand nineteen, she was the only high school player on Team USA's World Para Volley Super Six squad. They won gold. Annie hopes to compete in the World Para Volleyball Intercontinental Championships in the spring and in the Paralympics. I have no doubt that she will achieve that. Since COVID-19 hit and school moved to online learning, Annie has been living in Oklahoma, the training side of the USA Sitting Volleyball Team. Annie attends South classes remotely from Oklahoma and trains daily with the team. Being with her team every day marks a big shift from the select weekends of training she had done prior to the global pandemic. Annie will return to Salem when classes go back to in-person learning, but right now she's enjoying her time in Oklahoma and gaining valuable experience through the extra hours of training with her team. After Annie graduates from South, she plans to attend Linfield University with a focus on intensive care and nursing. Annie, you are a star and we can't wait to see what your future holds. We are so proud to call you a Saxon. Congratulations, Annie.
Very good, thank you.
Super impressive, thanks for honoring her tonight. All right, and then our final spotlight tonight is presented by Anthony Rosellis from Teacher Standards and Practices. He's with us tonight as well. And also our principal, Principal Tolento's on, so if you want to show your camera so we can see your face too, Teresa, that would be great.
Hi, everyone.
Hi there, good to see you.
Good evening Chair Chandragiri, Superintendent Perry. My name's Anthony Rosellis. I am the Executive Director of the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission. The Teacher Standards and Practices Commission was established in nineteen sixty-five to maintain and improve performance in the education profession by approving teacher preparation programs offered by Oregon colleges and universities, by licensing teachers, administrators, and other personnel employed in Oregon schools, and by taking disciplinary actions when educators commit crimes or violate standards for competent and ethical performance. In Oregon, the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission is an agency independent of the Department of Education. And we are fairly unique across the country. Now, there's only about a dozen of such agencies that are independent of the Departments of Education. And we are quite proud of that in Oregon. We believe it allows us to focus our efforts squarely on the needs of our educators and our K-12 students. The commission is comprised of seventeen members. I report to the seventeen-member commission. The commission is primarily made up of educators. We have four elementary teachers, four secondary teachers, principals at the elementary and secondary level. There are a few superintendents, school board member, few members of universities that provide teacher preparation, and a few public members. The commission could not do its fine work without the dedication of volunteer commissioners who serve for three-year terms and they can serve up to two of those three-year terms. I am pleased to report to the board and to Superintendent Perry that Governor Brown has appointed and the Senate has confirmed Teresa Tolento from Cesar Chavez Elementary School to serve as the Elementary Principal Representative on the commission. Thank you, Principal Tolento and Chrissy Perry, for your support.
And Teresa, we're super proud of you. Thanks for taking on one more thing in an already busy world, but your representation on the commission, I know, will add tremendous value.
Thank you. I'm very excited and honored with this privilege to work with other educators from across the state in support of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming tonight, too.
Thanks.
Well, thank you very much Superintendent Perry. You know, we'll go to the, can I see other faces? If there is a way to change from the slide? You'll go to the public comments section now. But before I start the public comment section, I just wanted to kind of bring up a topic. Questions had been raised about our public comment process that we used in the last board meeting and plan to use again. So I just wanted that to be addressed now. In unprecedented times such as this, we are all asked to kind of do our best and adapt and deal with complex challenges that's ahead of us. As a board chair, I felt safety was one such thing where we have, it's a critical topic. So also important to have some level of flexibility to take a decision with a situation or context warranted, such as what we have been seeing over the last few months. And in the current climate, this becomes all the more important. Today, I will read the text of the public comment statements I read in the last meeting and had planned to use this statement today and for subsequent board meetings. This is consistent with our information on our website and aligns with our intent of safe and welcoming school proclamation and ensure that our public comments will not cause or lead to any safety concerns. Have sent this to other board directors, discussed this matter in my public statements and with leadership in the last three months. We did discuss that this is a process that we are evolving as we are dealing with the situation. Safe and welcoming school and community is the outcome we all want to achieve. And this statement is consistent with our commitment to achieve that outcome in an equitable manner. Any community members, including members of communities of color, have experienced significant trauma and violence in their own lives or the land that they left and came here. We should do all we can to ensure we are not subjected to be re-traumatized again. Our inability to state this expectation should not be construed as a tacit endorsement of the statements that cause safety concerns or further harm in our community. By no means, our intent is to stop public comments. We welcome it. This statement was the reasonable interpretation of the guidelines that has always been published in the website and our policies. Some of those policies were written way before the COVID and the Zoom meetings, et cetera, were put in place. I will now read the public comments guidelines that I plan to read, then ask our attorney, Mr. Paul Dacopoulos, to help us understand how this fits with our current policies and understand any gaps we may have so that we can address them. Then I want our board directors to give us their feedback and let's have a discussion on this process. At least by a show of hand, I want your feedback if I should follow these guidelines for today's meeting. Then we could all get your, our feedback and maybe perhaps review this again and formally consider adopting it as our public comments guidelines in our next board meeting and subsequent board meetings because we need a process one way or the other. The statement, what I read last time, which I planned to read this evening, as a school board, we have been very open and welcoming in our public comments process. And I've ensured we provide many different venues for our public to submit their comments, including calls, video, written format. I, however, ask you to ensure that the comments are civil, respectful, and does not lead to a situation of vitriolic communication threats or intimidation towards each other or cause any safety concern in our communities for our students, educators, staff, school board members, or their families, or anyone else. And please follow these guidelines. Starting October twenty twenty, we may take written comments or video calls first, or we may go move back and forth between call-in, written, and video content. This gives people who submit comment in different forms an opportunity to have their voice heard. We will now hear public comment on agenda items only. The board has designated one hour total time for this section of the public comment. If you signed up to talk on non-agenda item, we will hear your comment in the second section of the public comment later in our meeting. The board has designated thirty minutes for non-agenda section of the public comment. As a reminder, each person is allowed three minutes to speak for the comment provided in language other than English. An additional three minutes is allowed for translation. This is a change from the previous where it was two minutes. Our communication directors, Sylvia McDaniel and our team, will now facilitate public comments. So I'll turn over the section to them. This is what I plan to read. This is an additional piece which we plan to read. The school board had asked Director of Communication to read, to not read comments that do not meet the standards of professional conduct and will do our best to professionally redirect callers. So this was the intent. Now I'm going to ask our attorney, Mr. Paul Dacopoulos, to give us your feedback so that we understand how this fits with our current existing policies and if there are any gaps that you believe we should be able to address. Mr. Dacopoulos.
Thank you, Board Chair Chandragiri. We really start with the public meeting law in Chapter one ninety-two of the Oregon Revised Statutes. And that makes it clear that this is, this is a public meeting law that permits the public to attend a public meeting, whether it's virtually or in person, but not necessarily to participate. It's the, the public meeting law goes on to say that boards of education such as yours or other public entities can permit public comment. And that's what you have a history of doing is permitting public comment typically before agenda items for action and then for non-agenda items toward the end of the meeting. So the public meeting law does not specify anything other than you can permit the public to speak. So we go to our board policies. And before I get into the specific board policies, I think the thing that the board needs to be careful of is if, if you open up your board meeting for public comments, you have to take all of them, whether you like them or not. Now, there's some limitations on that. You do not need to accept comments that are obscene, derogatory, name-calling, racist, threatening, or direct criticism of named employees. Employees, our employees especially are entitled to protection under the public meeting law so that if there are criticisms of our employees, that is done privately in an executive session. And that's one of the very few exceptions to the public meeting law. Now, that criticism does not apply to school board members. School board members are not employees. So again, we start with the notion that if you do open up your board meetings to public comments, you have to accept all comments, except those that I gave you a very short list about, threatening, obscene, derogatory, racist, name-calling, this sort of thing. And so that's the basic premise for all open public meetings. Now, you have two board policies that address public meetings. One is, I mean, the first board policy is Board Governance Policy eleven. And in Section Three, that policy says the board shall allow for public comment at business and special meetings. Doesn't say how long, doesn't say what kind of comments, it just basically is open-ended. It goes on to say, however, that the board chair may set a time limit on the length of individual public comment as well as the total time set aside for public comment for all people who are commenting. So your, your board policy gives each board chair the broad authority to say, here's how much time we're going to spend per public comment and here's how much time we're going to spend for all public comments. I will say that, that your school board has consistently given quite a bit of time for this. Other school boards don't give as much time as you have, but it's under the purview of the board chair to decide how much time. And that's pretty much where the information on public comments stops. Next, we go to BG nine, which is, defines the board chair's role. And there's a section, well, there's actually two sections of that, Section two B, which says that the board chair shall ensure that board meeting deliberations are fair, open, thorough, but also efficient, timely, and orderly. So that's your job, Chair Chandragiri, to make sure things are fair, open, and thorough, efficient, timely, and orderly. In addition, there's a Section Three that says that you, as the chair, are empowered to, and I quote, "to make all interpretive decisions that fall within the topics covered by board policies on governance process." So we do have a policy on public comments, that's in BG eleven. And so you're entitled to make all interpretive decisions within that topic. And there's some limitations if, if the decisions relate to results policy or executive limitations policy, you have to have board, board action on that. So the question really is for you and the board, does, does your statement fall within BG nine point three? Are you making an interpretive decisions covered by board policies? This goes on to say that you can use any reasonable interpretation of the provisions of these policies. So you'll have to determine as a board, as a board chair, in consultation with your fellow directors, if the statement that you read and want to continue to read is a reasonable interpretation of the, your current policy. I, I mean, my own reading is certainly you have express authority to set the time limit on public comment, both for individuals and for the total time that's set aside for a board meeting. There's no direct authority that talks about the order of when, in which public testimony is taken. And keep in mind, these board policies were, were enacted by the board long before we had pandemic. In previous, I mean, that seems like years ago, but prior to March of two thousand twenty, we did get board comments by email and those were typically not read to the board. They were simply given to the board during the board meeting. And board members read that when they were able to, to devote the attention to the email. We had only, we had no comments by video and we had no comments by telephone. And so there was never the issue of in what order should those comments be taken? So this is new and I think what you need to do is look to your fellow board members. If you're interpreting your authority to be able to, to determine what is the order of presentation of the public comments? Is it telephone first, followed by video, followed by emails, or in whatever order you're thinking? Certainly that's related to public comments, but your, your policies don't speak that specifically just because of the uniqueness of the time. So my recommendation is that you spend some time to hear what your fellow board members think about what you read. Have a discussion about what the board thinks about the public comments. In the end, I think you do get to, get to determine the time, I mean, certainly determine the time limit for the comments. And you can take the comments you hear from your board members. My recommendation is that you take some time to do this, so it's not, it's not so rushed. That you take some time to hear the comments tonight, to incorporate some of the ideas you hear. Let's write them down so everybody understands what the words are. And then you provide them at the next board meeting and, and have people have a chance to think more about it. I mean, obviously, the, this board puts a great value on public comments. And, and so you deserve to have some time as a board to talk about it and to reflect on what kind of limitations or guidelines that you wish to impose. So I'm not recommending that you use that particular speech tonight. You use it as a format and have the board talk about it and then we get something in writing. Anyway, that, that's my perspective and I'm open to any questions during your conversation. Thank you.
So I would like to open it up for discussion and put some directions and suggestions from each board member. I, I recognize Director LePole, who wants to go first, if you can unmute yours.
Sure. Yeah, no, and I really appreciate Paul taking the time to clarify our roles and responsibilities under our board governance because it's important that we follow those. At the same time, at the same time, it does not mean that they can't be changed or amended in the future. And so this is just an email that I sent to our board leadership and also something I expressed in person, well, actually over video when we were, and during our agenda planning. So when we discussed the new change to our process writing public comment, I did tell you my concerns. I told you that negatively, I believe that it negatively, negatively affects people who call in because people who call in are kind of like, they're like the people who would come in person to our board meetings. And so I think that creates, having people have to write in first creates, I think, more barriers of entry for people. And I think we should do our best to get rid of barriers of entry to ensure that we're hearing everybody out. And of course, we could, as far as the emails go, I, my personal belief is we can do as we've done in the past. You know, read them, have them sent to us before, we can read them before the board meeting. And then anything that we get right last minute that we don't have time to read, we can read right afterwards. And if people are very passionate about an issue, they can call, you know, or make a video and send it into us. And so I think those would be a higher priority. I think they should be for us. Now, I do think that we should have, we should keep our current public comments process that we have right now, and that we've kind of been following. I understand this all is new. We haven't had video in the past. We haven't had call in the past. But phone calls are like people who showing up in person. Videos are the next best thing to that. And so I think that we should follow kind of what we've been following until we have a discussion together or reach a decision as to how we do it as a group.
Thank you. Is there any other comment today? Director Goss, will you unmute? Thank you, Director.
Yes, I have a comment. And it really pertains to the fact that we are in the job of educating children all the way from preschool through high school. And I think it would do us well, do us a good service to help teach children how they present themselves. And quite frankly, I appreciate the fact that we should keep going and wait and decide something in writing, and on and on. Frankly, I've heard Director, our Chair, Dr. Shandrigiri, for what, at least three weeks, saying this needs to be pleasant, it needs to be no harsh language, bad language. Somebody can tell me entirely any time if they want to correct my behavior in some way. I don't mind that. We're a diverse place. But that doesn't mean it has to be said in the way it has been said. And I think a lot of us don't appreciate the name-calling that's been going on. And I think the longer we put up with that, the more we'll have of it. So I would just as soon get into it. And you know, if that starts, maybe you stop that and explain. This is one of the exceptions that we are not going to allow, such as name-calling, or such as foul language, or whatever it is. I don't think we need to make that big a deal out of it. And I think we've been running up to this and listening to it for far too long already. So that's just my opinion, and if you use bad language when you answer this, then I'll know to let you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Goss. Is there any other feedback comments? Director Kylo, you're going to say something?
Yes, I was going to, I was having read the policies as I do on a frequent basis. I don't want to repeat anything that's been said, but I agree with Paul that I believe that it is the board chair's discretion to make these decisions. At least that's the way it's always been since I've been on the board, and I suspect longer. And there have been several opportunities, I think, almost every year, for this to have been changed, and of course it has. So I would think it's up to you, and it's your discretion. And as a member of the board, I would support your decision.
Thank you, Director Kylo.
I have a comment.
Oh, I can't see you.
That's all right. That's all right. That's why I spoke up, because I couldn't find the raise your hand icon on my screen. I agree with Director Kylo. Board chair needs flexibility. It's your job to run a meeting and try to run it as smoothly as possible. And I also agree with Director Goss. There has been a lot of words that have been hurtful and untrue. And that's not why we're here. We're here because we care about the kids and our employees. And that's our job, and we're volunteers. I'm not an abuse victim. I'm not going to be abused forever. And I think it's time that we refocus on our kids. And I know some boards that don't take any comment at all, and I don't agree with that. But maybe there was a reason that they got to that place. I don't know. I do agree with Director Lapold that probably call-ins should come first, even though still limit the time, because they are actually spending the time to wait. And we do, of course, get emails that we can read. It would be nice to be able to get the videos if we don't get to the videos, so we can see those. But that would be, for the people who actually take time out of their day to sit and wait on hold for a long time, I think we need to hear them first, is my opinion. But they need to be reminded of the rules. We're supposed to be civil and not name-calling. And I think, you know, if they can't follow the rules, they don't get the privilege of testifying by phone. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Hein. Is there any other comment? Yes, Director Blasi.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to discuss this. Like Director Lapold, I sent emails earlier today expressing concerns about this. First of all, expressing the concern that it wasn't discussed with the board. And so I appreciate that we're pausing and having the opportunity to discuss. And I appreciate Paul Decopoulos suggesting that we listen and we give it some more thought and come back. But a couple of concerns that I've raised. I don't want to confuse the difference between expecting public comment to not be disrespectful and inflammatory and but because I agree with everyone that I like the way Kathy said it. You know, we should be teaching students and children to how to present. But that doesn't mean, though, that every time that we don't like what we're hearing from the public, that we have the authority and the privilege to cut people off, as happened at our last board meeting. I think that that was completely inappropriate. And what I started seeing in this board, in this policy or in this statement, was heading in that direction, from my opinion, including the comments that came with it. I think that for the public to be able to call in or email is incredibly important. And the way that the notification is written right now, it does appear as though the board chair would have the ability to decide whether or not to take calls. And I think that that disproportionately impacts our communities of color, especially those where English may be a second language. Because right now, they can call in, they can have their comments interpreted. But if the board suspects that we are going to hear comments that we don't want to hear, I think this revision gives the board the ability to not take those calls. And that's my concern, is that we are potentially silencing those voices again. And I think that that's wrong. I think that that's, again, you know, no, we're not paid, but we signed up to do this. And we agreed to represent all of our students and all of our families, regardless of their race, their color, their economic status. And I just see the changes as potentially headed down the wrong path of not allowing people to speak. But again, I do appreciate the comments that, you know, some of the comments last time were getting a little out of hand, but I think that that could be handled. The other thing that I would ask that we do as a board before making a final decision on this is that we look at this change through our equity lens. I don't see where we did that. I don't see how the equity lens was applied to this. And we've committed to applying the equity lens. So I would, you know, there are a list of questions that we're supposed to go through. How are our communities of color disproportionately impacted by any policies or procedures? And I think that, you know, it would be in the community's best interest for us to apply the equity lens before making a decision. So again, thank you for pausing this this evening. But I think that we need to look at the potential unintended consequences of making this type of change. So thank you.
Is there any other comments? Vice Chair Bethel, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I actually, I really appreciate the conversation all around. And I actually have a question for Director Blasi. You said that in the last board meeting, some of the comments were getting out of hand, and that there might be a way to address that. And I believe that's what led us to this point. And to the points that Paul Decopoulos has made around really trying to limit public comment that's obscene, derogatory, threatening, racist, name-calling, or criticism of employees outside of an executive board meeting. We have been kind of moving this around for a while. And it's not my intention, nor do I believe it is any other board members' intention, to limit public comment in any way, but to move public comment into a space where we're all actively hearing without having to be called names. And it's up fine for people to have their opinions and to call in and ask for resignations, if that's what they want to be doing. I don't care about that. What I care about most is that this is supposed to be a professional body. And there has been challenges for the better part of six months, not just in this space, but also previous to, when I came on to the board just last year with communication and relationships. And I think where we, as a board, struggle is really, really just trying to define what we really want out of this boardroom in general. And where is that, that fine line of what you think, what I think is acceptable? And so I agree, we definitely have to have that broader conversation. We've been having those conversations, the community, and we're hearing them. I think that obviously, if I took the time on a Tuesday night to sit on the phone and try to leave a comment over the phone, I would take it personally if I wasn't able to do that. But I also know that we've set a precedence in the past where our former Director of Communications sat and read public comments that were submitted by email, because it was important to hear those individuals in the boardroom. And we have heard, you even say, Director Blasi, how it's important to be hearing those emails. And so we took that into consideration when we put this process in play. And I have heard myself from members of the community saying, I have a few kids, I have to make dinner. I'm really trying to figure out how to do all things. And you're right, as Paul said, we've never been here before. It's unprecedented, so we don't know how to process COVID. I feel like when we suggested that we rotate through who starts when, it doesn't eliminate anybody, per se, from that public comment process. It just changes it up for opportunity for videos to come first, or written testimony to come first, or caller testimony to come first, and to continue to evolve through that. So I just, I'd love to hear the suggestions from other board members on how we go about, in a professional, very respectful space, hearing the dialogue and working to be present in this, in a non-threatening way. Not just us, those students and those parents that are calling in too have severe anxiety with making that intent to happen. And everybody wants to try to be working together. So I'm open to hearing how you all feel about what the next step is to try to encourage that behavior. As Director Goss said, we're supposed to be teaching. And this might be the opportunity to say, hey, we can hear you, and we more than want you to show up and do that. But we would prefer if you do not call names, and if you do not do these particular things. So however we can go about that as a team, that would be really great for me, because we all did sign up to serve all the kids of this community, and that is my intention to do that, because I have kids in these schools, and I really want to make sure we're all working together and providing a very safe environment for them to learn, which is what we're supposed to be doing here.
Did I kind of miss anybody? I have a few things to say, if that's all right. Did I miss anyone? All right. I really appreciate all this feedback. And I really appreciate, I am completely for public comment. There's no way I'm going to limit the public comment. For our democracy or republic to work, we need public participation. I want public to disagree with me at a policy level, completely disagree with how we approach things. That's disagreeing with a policy is a little different from dehumanizing me or anybody or anybody else. I really welcome different. That's how I can overcome my own implicit bias, by having different ideas to come and challenge my ideas. And that's how we can make our institutions better. The second thing is, I am a person of color. I just want to remind everybody. I come from a huge country where I left and came. And right from the time I was a very young man, I was 18, I've seen what communal violence is. And often the call for this communal violence, which kind of stirs up emotions against one or the other, just because they happen to belong to a group. And eventually, it leads to awful experiences. I've personally taken care and served in medical school, people who have been burnt and victimized because of this communal violence. I take words as seriously as an action. I do not wait till there is an action and somebody gets badly hurt and injured. So personally, I've spent 32 years of my life dealing with anything and everything I can do to prevent violence. And I really think that is an important part of our public institutions, public schools and everything else, to send the message consistent that safety is really an important thing. When people don't feel safe, they tend to polarize. And we cannot heal the racial relationship if we keep stirring up these things and threatening and creating an atmosphere of intimidation, fear. We cannot come up with good ideas. Our brain truly cannot work. That's how I see it. So for me, yes, I would like to hear. And I really want to appreciate all seven of our board and our leadership. We have sat through this for the 10 months, not just three months. It's not like somebody is trying to suddenly change the rules of the game. Today, that, you know, that situation is totally different from what it was. Legally, there may be some parameters, but I cannot afford to see a child being threatened in our community, or a student being threatened because they had a different view or a community member. Not all, I mean, you know, I know one of us can speak for everybody. I cannot speak for every person of color. I want to be honest with you all. My lived experience may be totally different from somebody else. But at some point in time, we need to work towards healing. And I personally think allowing this is different from policy-level changes that we need. We can disagree with, that's the American way. We can disagree with each other on a policy level, how to approach it. We can have debate, we can have disagreement. But there is no way we can solve anything and get our place better by dehumanizing the other person. So at some stage, people start zoning out if you start. And people have told me, people have shared with me, this is unbelievable what we have experiencing in our public. Even our legislature doesn't allow that. I was personally stopped in one of the testimony, and I was right. That Senator Prozinski stopped me, saying, stop. I'm not going to let you do that comment. And I was, you know, when the moment I thought, why did he stop me? I have a right. And when I look back, I think he was right. He had all the right to stop me, because I used that public comment time in a way. So I really think this is a good process. I really want public comment to be there. And among all the 195 school boards, I'm told we are the only one which allows multiple modalities, and practically half the school board business time is spent on public comment. No other school board, even large school boards in Oregon doesn't allow that. So participation in a way to help our organization or our school system to get better is what I'm hoping this public comment should lead to some kind of process. And I also, before we go, I just want to know, what do we do today in public comment? Whether we have no public comment on one end, or we have to have some guidelines. As much as our attorney said, let's hold off. But each act of threat or violence is, has its own damaging consequences. And so I just want some feedback on what do we do today as we work on a process? Director Goss, then I'll, Director Blasi after that. Director Goss, please.
I'd like to add a little bit to what I said. I don't think that my major concern is how it affects us. But what's the next important thing the kids are going to do? Especially the high school kids. They're interested in a job. They want to get out and earn some money and some independence. What are we doing to them when we spent the last two months listening to this kind? What are we doing to them when we spent the last two months listening to this kind of thing? You think that will ever get them a job? It's not going to happen. Like I said, somehow we have to teach them how to say it correctly. Maybe they can say they're feeling left out or something. Maybe they're being left out by the white supremacist, being me, they think. I don't appreciate that, and I'm not going to listen to it. But next time, I would not mind stopping and saying, hey, I'm not going to accept that. You know, do you know how to say it differently? Can I help you say it? Are you feeling left out? I don't care what it is, that's just my example. And I think we owe it to kids to leave this school district feeling good about how they represented themselves, how they figured out how to talk to other adults without ripping them to shreds, or not telling the truth, or what have you. We need to work on that. And that, that's my whole point.
Thank you. Director Glassy, you're going to say something else.
Yes, so again, thank you for the opportunity. I do have a couple of questions and thoughts. I, Satya, I heard you say a couple of times, you know, threats or comments of violence. And what I keep hearing is how, how this process is impacting board members. And I think we have all agreed that trying to address the comments that are over the top, unprofessional, but that's not where this started. What this started with was us cutting student voices off, cutting off the voices of the community during public comment that was specific to safe and welcoming schools. And this board limited, sorry, this board, this board limited the voices by saying these aren't related to safe and welcoming schools. We had students and parents and families, community members calling in to talk about the issue of SRO under the topic of safe and welcoming schools. And this board made the decision that those comments weren't relevant to the safe and welcoming schools policy. So my concern with this revised policy is that it's going to give the board the ability to silence those voices at any point that we choose to. So I think we are going on and on and on about the impacts to board members. But if we would just actually listen to the community, I think we'd have an opportunity to walk this back a little bit. Community is concerned that this board is not acting in their best interest. What they keep hearing and seeing is things that parents of being crazy. And if we want the community to begin actually healing and to trust this board, we need to listen, we need to knock off those voices that we say that we're advocating for. So I appreciate the discussion, but the discussion just to continue focus on the impacts to board members and is not focused on why we're even having this conversation. Because our community is still very upset with us, they're upset with the things that we So I would ask that we, again, we focus on the students and the community and figure out a way to, you know, when someone calls in and they're disrespectful. I think the chair or the vice chair has the ability to stop that conversation, but shouldn't have the ability to stop a conversation or a comment, because we don't want to hear the topic. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Leppold.
Oh yeah, well, first I wanted to say that, you know, the great part about these Zoom calls is we get a little bit of input into people's lives. It's a, Sharon, your dog sounds pretty cute. But I wanted to hit a couple of points. One is, when we're talking about, when we swore an oath, when we came in here to, into office, right? The one oath we take is, right as we get sworn in, and in there, we said that we're going to uphold the Constitution. And in that, it talks about, you know, and in the Constitution, of course, there's free speech, which is a finicky subject, you know. It's really, you have to be careful, because, you know, here, we believe in people's right to speak, whether or not we like what they're saying. And so, for example, and I think what Sharon's talking about was, you know, when those kids were calling in, right? And I believe at the time, they were listing names of people who signed something, I forgot what, what the exact name of it was. But technically, they used, they would use it off of an agenda item to list the names. And so I guess that we have to have a conversation about it, because we keep beating around the bush and saying vague statements of what we should or should not do as a board philosophically wise on either side, right? We, we're not going to, we're not going to address the actual issue, right? I want to, we, this is going to be dirty work and we have to, we have to actually talk about it. So in the, when those students call in, right? It's a fine line between cutting off a student or a person, just a person in general, let's just say, because we don't like what they say, or because they're derogatory, right? Who, how do we interpret that, right? And because if, if we're cutting off someone just because we don't believe it's important enough to hear, or we don't believe that it's, has enough to do, it doesn't have enough importance to do with our agenda items, even though it's about technically an agenda item, then we're running a fine line right there. But my question, and here's a question I would ask to Sharon, I'd ask to, sorry, Director Glassy and Director Chanda Giri and everybody, would be, when that happens, this is something we haven't, we haven't talked about yet. When someone calls in, right? Because, and I do believe we have to take phone calls, I think we have to, and I think we have to do it first, because that's people coming in. But when someone does go off the rails, right, if someone goes off and into a tangent or says something that is in that list of things that Director, sorry, Mr. Decopoulos was saying, was racist, derogatory, name-calling, yada, yada, that whole list, what do we do? I haven't heard anybody answer that question. So I was wondering if anybody had any ideas of how we could do that or what we would do.
Okay. Let me ask one, one question. Our attorney read a certain conditions where he says, you know, we cannot use those as a way of public comment. So I kind of go back and ask myself, why do we have those exceptions? What is the, you know, kind of, what is the reason those exceptions are put in place? Why can't we allow that also under the free speech? That is, you know, so I start with that as the endpoint. And then in my head, it looks like, okay, that can cause undue harm. It doesn't serve the purpose of, whatever it is. So I start with that. And the way I look at it is, this is a public school. And we are having little children and families from all over the world, and some families have escaped all kinds of very dangerous situations in their own land where the words are as scary as actions. So we can't simply subject everybody in this community to certain things, saying that there is a freedom of saying whatever they want, whether they understand the language or not. So it has really reached a point of dangerousness in our community. So, and again, it's, we have to really go by the context of what is the current climate and what's the current context. So that's how I interpreted saying, what is the safety risk? And how do we allow this process? And when we became, and I became the chair, there is no clear guidelines. We had to really evolve and we said, okay, how do we get to the point where we can come up with some framework?
Chair.
Director, yeah, Director Hyun, and then I'll go to Mr. Decopoulos first.
Thank you. You know, I hear a lot of statements about not cutting students off and so on. And I think the best thing we can do for our students when they're testifying is treating them the way they're going to be treated out in the world as adults. And most of these students are old enough that if they were to commit a crime, they would be treated as an adult. Now, I may not necessarily agree with that because I know they're, you know, not done really growing or anything. But I just don't know if, if we have special rules for students versus different rules for non-student adults. I don't know that we're serving our kids the best that we can. They need to learn how to function in this world and, and speak respectfully to other people.
Okay, Mr. Decopoulos, you're going to say something. I don't
Well, I, thank you very much. I, you know, I think back to my law school training and all the case law that talks about free speech. And we all know this, this is not, these are not hard concepts, there are certain things you can't say, there are certain speeches that is not free. You can't yell fire in a theater. You can't sexually, you can't say sexually explicit harassing language to your coworkers. You can't threaten to kill someone, you'll get arrested for things like that. So we're not talking about free, free speech in the sense that there's no, there's, there's no markers on either side of the road. But I think what you should avoid is defining too early what you think is derogatory. You know, in a, in a way, the community doesn't care how you feel about what they say, they just need to say what they have to say. Where you can limit it is if it's explicitly obscene, threatening. If, if all you're dealing with is name-calling, things, things of that nature, that's unacceptable. It's unacceptable for the board, it's unacceptable at school, it's unacceptable in, in people's homes or in the workplace. So I would just encourage you not to automatically jump to the conclusion that something's threatening or derogatory, just because it's not, it's difficult to hear. And, you know, if we were in a regular board meeting, someone would come up to the, to the dais and stand in front of the board. And if things got out of hand, and this rarely happened, but if things got out of hand and there was swearing or cursing or bad behavior, the board chair would rule them out of order and tell them to sit down. And if that didn't work, there would be people that would, would help that along. Now, we're remote, and so you have the, you have the power, or at least can talk to the person who has the hang up button. And so I think you need to use it sparingly for behavior that's really, really bad, that fits in one of these categories. And otherwise, as long as it, as it's related to an agenda item, even if it doesn't make sense to you, why a student would read twenty-five names off of a list? If, if they're, they're talking about students who have signed a petition that they don't feel safe in school because of SROs, and we're talking about the agenda item of safe and welcoming schools, I think they get to do that. On the other hand, if it's a tirade of ugly racist or derogatory comments about how board members look, this is unacceptable. And so I, I think that those are the, those are the free speech guidelines. And we're not suggesting that, that the speech should be so open that you can't regulate it, but I think you have to do it with great care. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on this? And I want a quick show of hands saying, today, it's a board comment, how do we proceed? Because while we kind of take in all this input and work on it, because at the end of the day, we have board comments waiting, and we need to proceed. And there is one section I would like to spend some time, because we are required to have some public comment on SIA. So as a board chair, I'm going to rule that we give a little bit of preference to SIA-related comment first. And then we will get to others, because it's required, because we have a deadline to submit. So let's do a quick show of hand saying, should I follow these guidelines for today? And moving forward, we can revise it, adopt it and change it. Let me kind of quickly start with Director Kylo, you're going to say something or?
I.
Oh, thank you.
I.
Thank you. Director Goss. I can't hear you.
Unmute, yes.
I'm sorry, I'll vote I this time, because we are pushed into it, we've got a deadline and calls have been waiting. But I would have liked it had we dealt with this maybe earlier.
Thank you. Director Leppold, how do you want us to proceed today?
I think we should take calls first, those are people who would be here in person if they had the chance.
But with regard to the guidelines we read, what kind of calls and is, do I, do you want me to stop if it doesn't pertain to, or if it causes some concerns which we have discussed today?
Well, are we listening to phone calls first and video?
There are certain things, I don't know how the SIA callers come, is it a call or is it email, I don't know. But we are going to, then we're going to read a few statements, and then we can go to the calls.
Okay, well, in regards to the email that you sent the policy, when did you public comment? I do not think we should do this until we have further discussion on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Bethel, how do we, want me to proceed today?
Yeah, I support the statement.
Thank you. Director Glassy, how do you want me to proceed today?
I, I think it's important, like you said, to take the SIA calls and emails. But I am not in support of you implementing your proposal until we have additional discussion.
Thank you. Director Hyun, how do you want me to proceed today?
You know, it's really hard to be the chair, and you get different voices, all wanting different things or whatever. And so Chair Chanda Giri, I support whatever decision you'd like to make.
Thank you very much. And I would like to proceed the way I read today. We'll start with SIA-related comments, or if it's an email. And I would really welcome all your input. And hopefully, by next board, we will, business meeting, we will have at least the first reading of how this will be proceeding further. Thank you very much. So now we're going to go to the public comment section. And we're going to start with public comments related directly to agenda items tonight. The SIA agreement is on the agenda, and the requirement of the agreement is that we provide opportunity for comment on agreement in a public meeting to ensure we hear from our community on this item tonight. As much as possible, we will hear the comment related to SIA ahead of other public comment. And the school board has asked our Director of Communication to not read comments that do not meet the standard of professional conduct, and we'll do our best to professionally read direct callers. And today, we have also made a slight adjustment, which I shared in the chat, yes, before. We will allow six minutes to hear public comment in a language other than English, and three minutes for comment and three minutes instead of the two minutes for translation. And today, we'll begin the board meeting, and moving forward, we take written comments or video first. We may go move back to and forth between call-in, written or video comments. This gives different people who submit comments in different forms an opportunity to have their voices heard. For tonight's meeting, we'll begin with reading the written public comments, and that to SIA-related comments first. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. McDaniel, with you and your team, thank you very much, you have been patiently waiting.
Thank you, Chair Chanda Giri. Chair Bethel, Superintendent Perry, Board of Directors. We don't have any written comments for the SIA, I believe we do have one comment, right, Erin?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and if we're ready to go into that, we have Ross on the line to sign up for SIA. All right, Ross, please begin.
Good evening, Chair Chanda Giri, Directors and Superintendent Perry. I am providing testimony regarding Agenda Item 4B, Approval of Student Investment Account. Are we, are we getting the audio?
Yes, there is someone who was on mute.
Okay, strategy number one, specifically, I am interested in the targeted outcomes of strategies one, six and nine. Strategy one, the targeted outcome. Strategy 1, the targeted outcome will be improved reading scores, language acquisition growth for elementary students. Strategy 6, the targeted outcomes will be greater sense of belonging for students and targeted supports for students demonstrating more extreme behaviors. The target outcome is increased engagement and participation, increased sense of belonging for specific student groups, and through parent-family perceptions of school as measured by Panorama data. And also the strategy number nine, the music curriculum. Thanks for the music curriculum. I hope that is going to help the music department out. I think that's a good move. And a couple hundred thousand dollars towards the software. Hopefully, it will be a good investment because the music programs definitely need support right now. Concerning the other targeted outcomes, I would really like further clarification on these. And are they relying on the standardized testing, or some seem to rely on local measurements, which I do find encouraging? I'd like more information about the outcome measurement. Now, strategy number six includes budgeting for Edge counselors. Edge Annuity is a software project designed for profit, not learning. Normally used for course recovery, algorithms or answer keys are easily available on the internet for students. Like online charter schools, Edge Annuity shows little effectiveness for learning, and flawed robo-grading algorithms seem to cause racial inequities in education. Edge Annuity has a known history of including racially insensitive content that is contributing to systemic racism, and contains explicitly religious content, and has admitted this in writing to using an eleventh-grade language arts material in its middle school social studies curriculum. Teachers have no formal role in choosing the program. It's very top-down. An adoption of EdgAnnuity in Auburn, Alabama, has drawn numerous complaints from students and parents, including technical problems and lack of communication from the company. The contract is shrouded in controversy over the recent conviction of the state former Speaker of the Houses for a $210,000 payout EdgAnnuity made to him while he was in office. The distrait speaker was found guilty of receiving money from a lobbyist to work from EdgAnnuity. The EdgAnnuity program has long been accused of allowing students to cheat, especially in high school credit recovery programs, that allows students to retake courses they failed but need for graduation. A review of internet literature has some great, interesting articles about gaming the grade and how one middle schooler beat a virtual learning algorithm. The EdgAnnuity.
Well, I have to stop. If you have a written submission, we'll take it. Your time.
Okay, just please, let's, let's see more outcome measurements and, and hopefully there'll be a little place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller or written comment?
Yeah, so now just move on to agenda item callers. And we have Patrice on the line. I'm just trying to get her to unmute.
Sorry.
Oh, you're good. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Perry, members of the school board. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, please.
Okay. I support the "Hands and words are not for hurting" proclamation. Have you considered extending the timeline for the entire school year instead of just one week? And I hope all, all members will strive to model this positive behavior. Just to be clear, and after this last conversation, I'm going to be very respectfully saying this. The groups that some of you are associated with do have ties to white supremacy and white nationalism, and they do engage in hate and violence. They do not view all people with respect and dignity, and you as school members should. So I'm going to ask how you can fully support this proclamation and serve all our students with an equity lens if you continue to be associated with these groups. If you have any doubt, please check the Anti-Defamation League, the Southern Poverty Law Center, or the Western Safe Center for Inclusive Democracy. I am grateful for the Students Belong Act that is now a part of every school district in Oregon. Students have a right to a school environment free of hate symbols in a school where they feel safe. This proclamation fits in very well with this act. Please support it with love, compassion, and respect for all of our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrice. Erin, who is our next caller or written comment?
Yes, next caller is Clarissa. Clarissa, please go ahead.
Hello. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Okay. So my name is Clarissa Rodriguez, and I'm an educator in the district. I teach a blend of third and fourth. Today, I'll be discussing the following agenda items: The Words Are Not for Hurting Proclamation and the SIA. A portion of the proclamation that I would like to highlight reads as follows. Abuse can be in the form of verbal, mental, physical, and often escalates to further violence. Police engage in all these types of violence. Just because they are a role of authority does not mean that it's not abuse, and it's actually worse. Additionally, as stated in the district's own anti-bullying mandatory staff training that we have to do yearly on Slide number six, it reads, bullying is a behavior that is repeated and has the potential of being repeated and involves a power imbalance. By the district's own definition of bullying, this board, the police they protect, and the district has bullied its students. Continuing, the proclamation states, quote, "We support the efforts of district staff and our community by helping students learn how to stop abusive cycles," end quote. Yet, when the youth have tried all summer to stop the abusive cycles of not only the SROs but the board itself, they were silenced, and adults used intimidation tactics, tactics, for example, being hung up on them, and requesting that minors disclose their first and last names and the area Salem in which they live, which is not only creepy, but is also unsafe as it opens minors to doxing. You cannot truthfully sign this proclamation and mandate staff to enforce anti-bullying policies when the district spends money on the bully brigade known as SROs. Additionally, SROs are not in alignment with the district's behavior system, PBIS. Nowhere in the trainings I have taken for PBIS does it say bring in armed individuals. But of course, it's another example, the district listens to our kumbaya message, but don't pay attention to our actions. Now for the SIA. According to the Salem Kaiser School strategy that were planned by the Oregon Legislature in 2019, Salem Kaiser would address the following. One, meeting students' mental and behavioral health needs. By ending the SRO contract for good and reinvesting that money into counselors, it would address that need. Mental and behavioral health require trained counselors and therapists, not someone who spends sixteen weeks training how to shoot a gun. The second strategy states, increasing academic achievement and reducing disparities for students from racial or ethnic groups that have historically experienced academic disparities, students with disabilities, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, not only disadvantaged, houseless students and foster children, end quote. Something you guys may have heard, but may, but certainly do not put into consideration for students mentioned above is Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You cannot expect high academic achievement until those foundational needs are met, and those needs can be met with ending the SRO contract and reinvesting in students' needs. Lastly, I'd like to point out the comment about youth not being able to get jobs due to their public comments. Kathy, I also participated in the public comments to the school board when I was in high school, just like these youth have been. And I've held two jobs ever since high school, even currently now, since the district pays teachers so low. You are very wrong in saying that they won't get jobs because of how they are speaking. So, luz, si los niños de luz siguen con la lucha y hasta la victoria siempre.
Erin?
Yes. Yes, sir. Our next caller is Angelique.
Hello?
Oh, please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Angelique Crater, and I'm also here to talk about the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting proclamation, which I find very ironic because considering that our school board has done nothing but use their words to hurt BIPOC youth in our district. From Marty Hain upholding three persons in the room, Paul Kylo doing blackface, Kathy Goss complaining about having to feed children in this district instead of getting a convertible, Daniel Bethel not participating in an online panel because she feels threatened by youth, youth youth, to our newly-elected Chair Satya suppressing our voices during school board meetings. It is clear that our school board does not care about us. You've all spent a long time reviewing the school board policies during this meeting. However, Satya, you have not been open with the school board public comments. You have not been civil with us. You claim that you don't like the name-calling. But how do you think we feel when we see our school board members talking negatively about us on social media or with other community members? How can Bethel say that she wants us to be professional when our own school board members are not professional? Have you all seen Marty Hain's public Facebook comments about us? Do you need us to email them to you? How can you say "Hands and words are not for hurting" when all you do is hurt our communities and our youth? You, you protect the youth of SROs in school, knowing completely well that they hurt our BIPOC youth. Our youth have shared their experiences with you over and over and over again. You know that BIPOC youth have had countless amounts of terrible experiences with them, including being arrested in elementary school. Hands and words are not for hurting when you talk about people who are affluent or people who are white, but never the low-income BIPOC who are stepped on during their entire time in this district. This was even taken far enough to kick BIPOC youth, loose youth in the school task force, even though they're the only ones with real experience with SROs, not just youth that work closely with the district. It is unfair for you to claim that hands and words are not for hurting when you've used your power to exclude youth from being on the task force just because they do not agree with how you set it up. It is unfair that our youth are being treated this way and are continue to be treated this way. Our school district is not safe and welcoming like Satya has claimed it should be for BIPOC youth. If you cared about your kids in this district, you would actually listen to us. And I'm here to stand with Lu's and our demands to remove SROs because that is a piece of Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting because SROs have done nothing but hurt us with their hands and with their words. So we need to remove SROs, and we need to remove discriminatory and racist school board members like Marty Hain, Paul Kylo, and those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is our next comment or caller?
Yes, we have Roberto. Waiting to unmute here in a second.
Yeah, Roberto, go ahead.
Okay. Me llamo Roberto versus Lendez, miembro de la comunidad, graduado reciente de la escuela de Salem Kaiser. Como la última vez le he preguntado cómo iban a cambiar la situación con la policía en las escuelas. Como antes, ¿por qué no pusieron acciones detrás de sus palabras, supuestamente contra el racismo? ¿No creen que la policía alimenta el camino hacia el encarcelamiento desde la escuela especialmente de estudiantes de color? ¿Por qué siempre mueven el día de dirigir para tener acción sobre los oficiales, recursos escolares? ¿Lo que son antirracistas o nada más lo usan como una pulsera, usandolo y quitándolo cuando se le da la gana? ¿Qué pasa? Están lastimando a estudiantes de color. Aunque han declarado el "Hands and words are not for hurting", la única forma en que pueden ayudar a la comunidad es de sacar la policía de nuestras escuelas y invertir el dinero en nuestra educación.
Cheryl, are you available to provide an interpretation?
Yes, I am. I wanted to confirm that the caller was done.
Okay.
So, hi, my name is Roberto. I am a graduate from the Salem Kaiser School. Last time, we, we were talking about the change with police, but your actions do not go behind your words. Your actions aren't following your words. This continues to be the school-to-prison pipeline for us, the colored, us, the colored. Do you say that you're anti-racist, but you only wear it like a bracelet? You wear it whenever you want, but you can take it off at, at another time. You need to be focused on our education and focus on us as the students of color.
Ms. McDaniel? Erin, do we have? Is there any other written comment? And because, okay, then who is our next caller, please?
Yes, our next caller is Alex, and let me get him to unmute.
Hello, my name is Alexander Sosa Navarro. I'm a student in the Salem Kaiser School District. I'm a tenth grader in McKay High School. I'm here to talk about the "Hands and words are not for hurting." I want to start off by saying the school-to-prison pipeline is an actual issue. It's very disgusting to see these white problematic people try to say that it's not an issue. I'm talking about you, Marty Hain, and some others. School-to-prison pipeline has always been an issue for the BIPOC students, including the students with disabilities in the Salem Kaiser School District. SROs are the leading factor in the school-to-prison pipeline, but there are many privileged folks that are in power who tell BIPOC students, school-to-prison pipeline is non-existent. I laugh and cringe. When you, when they ask, why do brown kids bang on windows? You see, last week, they went around town attempting to gather support to criminalize us. And that's not, that's not anti-racist. That is actually the opposite of anti-racist work. So please listen to us, youth, and fight the systematic fascism, and please divest the policing and reinvest into the future of many BIPOC students. Y'all pledge to serve. From what I heard from Satya, we can't give criticism, but what do you expect when you guys aren't even doing your job? Remember that we're the stakeholders, and without us, you guys are nothing.
Okay. So I believe the next caller is Andrew. Andrew, are you on the line now? Or we could go to Vinnie? So I'm looking for Andrew or Vinnie. Next. Okay, so let's move down to Nayeli.
Yeah, what's up?
Okay, you are live. You may begin.
I'm live, isn't it?
Yeah, sorry. I just brought you into the meeting, so please go ahead.
Uh, hi. So, sorry. My, my name is Nayeli Cruz. And I would just like to quickly recommend that the Salem Kaiser School Board at all look up the term tone policing and maybe look at how that kind of contributes to the practice of cultural assimilation, which is used, you know, to, to drive cultural genocide and then I can get started on this "Hands and words are not for hurting" thing. So I would like to read the first whereas in that proclamation that Marion County Board of Commissioners released. It's dated for tomorrow, October fourteenth, twenty twenty, but it was released six days ago. So that confused me, but it says, whereas, "A community without abuse and violence is a dream we all share." And whereas, "Any form of mistreatment of another is abuse, and all people have a moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence." And whereas, "Each of us must come to understand that it is within our personal power to choose not to use abuse and violence to resolve conflict." And whereas, "We recognize the respect for ourselves and others is key to developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances." Yeah, so you're probably going to read that before you sign it, but I would just like to point out that a community without abuse and violence that dream involves removing police from our schools, and it also involves not being tone-policed while in a public comment. Chair Chandagiri, while I appreciate you looking at rules to, I don't know, change them, you're really talking about free speech at a school board meeting, so that's pretty scary. I would just like y'all to know that it would be pretty good to maybe add how silencing adds to abuse and violence and how maybe an abuse of power add to that dream we all share of a community without it.
Thank you. Erin, who is our next caller?
Yeah, so I'm going to see if we can track down Andrew. So Andrew, are you on the line? Or Vinnie?
Wait, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you please give your name and go ahead?
Hello, my name is Andrew. I'm a student at McNary. I attend most of schools. I've attended most of schools. Wait. Sorry. Hello, hello, my name is Andrew. I'm a student at McKay. I have attended most of schools in this district. I'm here today because I have been directly impacted on the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm here to remind everyone that the school-to-prison pipeline is real. It's a big problem in our schools. Please divest from SROs and, and invest in education.
So now looking for Vinnie. Vinnie, are you on the line? Okay, we're going to see. Vinnie, are you on the line? I'm going to try going to Tony. So. So Vinnie, I think you've unmuted. Are you on the line now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Well, hello, my name is Pedro Levas. I am a student of Salem Kaiser. I'm here to speak about the "Hands and Words Are Not For Hurt", hurting. It's 2020 and the BIPOC youth are standing up to systemic racism. I was in the task force and I was kicked out for essentially being a whistleblower on the bullying and, yeah, and we received from adults and the student task force. I am here to ask again, please remove SROs and invest into education. I know for sure and for facts that the BIPOC's community is hurt.
Okay, so they have concluded. I'm going to see if we can get Tony on here.
Aaron, before you call the next caller, you know, I think, I'm not sure what is the need. We need the first and the last name. Is it part of a procedure that we are supposed to keep track of the names? If somebody can, uh, Mr. Dacopoulos, could you clarify, is first and last name needed for record-keeping as part of public record rules?
Well, the practice of the board has asked for first and last name and, uh, residence. You've gotten away from street address, but you've asked, uh, for their, uh, city address to determine how, uh, how, uh, they are related to our community. We, we have not allowed in the past anonymous comments. And so to the extent that we could just get the first name, uh, that tends more toward the anonymous comment side. So my recommendation is you ask for first and last name and city of residence.
All right. Thank you very much for clarifying that. I would ask our next caller to please, uh, tell us your first and last name and your place of residence, city of residence, but that is the way, uh, we have been practicing.
So Tony, it looks like you're ready to go. Please start with your first, last name and, uh, place of residence, city of residence.
Uh, my name is, my name is Tony Villanueva, and I'm not comfortable saying my residence and place because there's people that are part of the three presenters and proud boys. All right, so, okay. So today I'm here to remind you that SROs and the school-to-prison pipeline is causing harm, endangering my community. I have read that there is a proclamation of "Hands and Words Are Not Of Abuse", why? Why aren't you acknowledging that SROs in general cause harm and abuse, cause abuse of power, and y'all don't want to believe in? And I'm gonna hit it.
Okay, so our final caller for the, who signed up for agenda items is, um, on the line, so I'm just asking to unmute. And I'm so far not getting, oh, here we go. Um, so Luis, if you're on the line, please begin with your first and last name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Luis. I also don't feel comfortable sharing my residence, knowing that there are white supremacist ties on the school board. Uh, so to begin, members of the school board and community members who are present, with regards to the "Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting" proclamation, it is profoundly ironic how such an abusive school board will sign such a proclamation. This proclamation speaks of creating a sustainable, better school and community environment, but how can that happen when we have racist and conservative school board members who try to rob us of our right to speech, uh, with the current oppressive policies that they have been placed on us today? This proclamation dreams of a world without abuse and violence, but how can that happen when school resource officers are incarcerating the very students that you serve? Lastly, this proclamation acknowledges any form of mistreatment, but my last question is, how can that happen when in this school board Marty Hain is a white supremacist, Paul Kylo did blackface, Kathy Goss speaks on students learning proper presentation, uh, but she tells students that they won't get jobs and that they shouldn't be vocal about the injustices affecting them. Shows how very, very improper the school board is. Uh, lastly, Satya clings to the fact that he's a person of color, uh, but he doesn't acknowledge the fact that he's a shield for white supremacy. Uh, he silences the voice of BIPOC students and uplifts the voice of this racist school board instead. Uh, I end my final thoughts, uh, by saying Marty Hain and Paul Kylo need to resign. This abusive school board needs to be held accountable. And as school is getting closer and closer to attending in-person classes, I hope that you can commit yourself to your equity lens promises and use your power to remove SROs with schools. Stop implacing oppressive policies on this school board. Stop trying to rob us of our voices and start listening to BIPOC youth.
Thank you very much. I don't know how, who's keeping track of time. I cannot, uh, Ms. McDaniel, is there some time and you want to share some other, uh, miscommunications that has come our way?
Yeah, we don't have any written comments on the agenda items. Um, I don't believe, do we have any videos, Aaron, or is that it?
Um, that's it for our agenda item comments.
Should we take about a five-minute break? I want to kind of stretch and be back. Would that be all right with the board and everybody? Kind of, yes, just stretch yourself and come back. We have some important items, so thank you. And our next items are to start with the action items. This, Mrs. Ann Kelly, if you would like to say a few words on the proclamation, our next item is going to be approve the "Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting" proclamation. So start with, uh, Mrs. Kelly, if you could share a few words. And then we'll go to Director LePold, who will read the proclamation. Mrs. Kelly, are you there?
Am I muted? No.
Yes, now we can hear you. Go ahead, Mrs. Yeah.
I'm sorry. All right, my name is Ann Kelly and I'm the founder and executive director of the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting nonprofit organization located here in Salem, Oregon. My address is 5422 Liberty Road South in Salem. And I so appreciate having this opportunity to share good news and ask for your help. Thank you, first of all, for supporting the 23rd Annual National Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week Proclamation. I'm grateful to bring you good news. In this uncertain and difficult times, we need positive and powerful action now more than ever. Why did I choose October for the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week? October is National Domestic and Family Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. It is also National Bully Prevention Month. The purpose of an annual proclamation for the Hands and Words Are Not Hurting Week is to bring about community awareness while providing opportunities to come together in unity, to take the, to heart the Purple Hands 14-word pledge. And the pledge is, "I will not use my hand or my words or hurting myself or others." Our Oregon governors since 1997, Man, Marion, Yemhill, Klamath County Commissioners also provide the same proclamation and message for all of our citizens every year. I'm also here today to thank all the principals, teachers, counselors, and staff representing all grade levels here in Salem Kaiser, who put this simple idea into action in our schools 23 years ago that began a state, national, and international movement that we call the Power of One. I'll give you a little history. Most people, I don't usually have time to tell you how this all started and where it is. I'm a martial artist with a third-degree black belt. I've taught self-defense classes for women and girls aged 12 and up in the community for more than 25 years. My husband, Bob, of 53 years, is a retired emergency physician who worked at Salem Hospital Emergency Department for 34 years before he retired. Our oldest son, Rob, is an emergency physician as well and works at Salem Hospital Emergency Department today. They are the front lines, on the front lines, for caring people who've been hurt by abuse and attempted suicide. In 1995, my husband and I worked with Salem Hospital, Medical Education Director, to start the first annual domestic violence conference for professionals and anyone who works with victims and survivors. The name of the conference was Victims of Violence Hearing and Healing. This is about hearing and listening so that we can heal. I wanted to do more to educate children at the earliest ages and all ages to begin to help break the cycles of abuse and violence in the home. That was my, where I began. But I was also aware of the bullying, mean-spirited teasing in schools, including school shootings. Bullying has been around forever, but it was escalating and suicides in our kids was also escalating. I asked the original group of about 20 educators here in Salem and Kaiser that represented elementary, middle, and high schools to give it a try, give this pledge a try. In six weeks, I collected over 11,000 Purple Hands traced and signed pledges or display at the Third Annual Domestic Violence Conference at the Elsinore Theater in Salem in 1997. That's the year the Purple Hands pledge was born. We didn't have a conference center yet then. I asked everyone to have their students and staff trace two purple hands, one for their school to display and one for display at our national conference where speakers and attendees came from around the country. We could literally show the Purple Hands and the pledge displayed that we were doing something to educate our kids, and from there it began to spread. Feedback from teachers and counselors was immediate and positive. From those 20 pioneers, the teachers here and counselors and principals, we began our Power of One movement in Oregon. And it moved from Oregon to all 50 states and 23 countries, and I'd love to list them on, but we don't have time right now. I took our student voices and faces from South Salem High School and the Boys and Girls Club on film to Harvard, where I presented at a national symposium on children at risk. Not in this order, but from Harvard to the Navajo Nation and many other native tribes, army soldiers and their families on U.S. military bases. I'm emotional. The Purple Hands has, has expanded to include government agencies, hospitals, the business community, places of worship, youth organizations, battered women shelters, homeless shelters, batterer treatment programs, and birthing centers for parents of newborns. This Purple Hand pledge is for everyone from age three to 103. Now, do you know why I chose the color purple? Here's why. Purple represents all people, black, white, and brown around the world, blind to the color of skin, age, gender, sexual orientation, race, religion, or nationality. Everyone has the moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence. Everyone is included and treated with dignity and respect and are taught why we take the pledge. We take the pledge because we are all valuable, irreplaceable human beings and are created of equal value, of equal value. No one is better than another. Purple also is our national color, used to honor and remember victims and survivors of abuse and violence. Our purple hands make sure we never forget people who have suffered and died at the hands of abuse and violence or people who are suffering now in silence, afraid to ask for the help that they need. Purple is also used is, uh, our, excuse me, purple, the Purple Heart is our national oldest Medal of Honor awarded to men and women wounded or killed in combat. My father served in World War II. He was wounded twice in battle and has that Purple Heart. We honor their sacrifice and service with our purple hands. The red heart in the middle of the palm serves to represent when you hurt yourself or another person or someone hurts you with words, by actions or by actions. It hurts deep inside. It hurts your heart. It hurts your spirit, and it's not okay. Thank you for your patience. The open hand in front of you means stop around the world, right? It does. The purple-hand red heart means stop and think before you say or do anything hurtful to yourself or others. Taking the Purple Hands pledge is taking an oath, which is done with an open raised hand, just as in a court of law. When you take the Purple Hands pledge, take it to heart, mean it with your heart. Kids will tell you if you ask them, "How does it make you feel when somebody calls you a name?" They will tell you, the littlest ones. "It makes me feel sad, scared, mad." And one boy told me it made him feel depressed. This is teaching empathy. When you ask kids, "How does it make, make you feel?" So we're teaching empathy with this pledge. And we learn, all of us learn by repetition. We learn how to read. We learn how to ride a bike. We don't just do it one time and, and. We don't just do it one time, and it's repetition, repetition, repetition that makes this pledge sink in, in here and in here. And the more often the pledge is recited, it becomes part of our awareness, part of the fabric of our, of our school, of our home. And it helps us to pay attention to what we say and do to ourselves and others that cause pain. It's about asking for help if we are being hurt or hurting ourselves. It's about that. That's intervention. So it's prevention. Stop, think before you say anything or do anything that's hurtful. Are my words helping or hurting? Are they helping or healing? Are my hands, which means all actions, helping or hurting? Think about it. It's prevention. Now, I believe, I mean, we're all human beings. We're not perfect. I'm not. You're not. Nobody is. So this pledge is something that we can call on to remind us. And if we, you said the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And at most public meetings and ballgames and swim meets and all the sports activities our kids are involved in, we say the Pledge of Allegiance. How many words are in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thirty-one. And we can do it by memory, even if it's five years since we took the pledge. Okay? So repetition is key, because you can learn fourteen words with repetition. I believe we share a vision where all of our schools can be safe and a kind place for students and staff to learn and thrive. It is vital to have a safe place to talk about the problems we face, bullying, mean-spirited teasing, and self-harm and suicide. Open and honest communication is vital to find solutions and to get help to those in desperate need. The pledge opens opportunity to talk, to get help, and to heal. As our schools begin, as our schools begin to open during these uncertain times now, now is a time to consider setting a standard of respect, equality, for all people to be valued and included. I apologize for those coming in. Again, "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others" is a tool that is designed to open painful and often scary conversations. Hearing is healing. A simple and direct way to reinforce the dignity and value of every human life. I am valuable. You are valuable. We are all valuable, irreplaceable human beings. Again, why we take that pledge, to remind us all of that. Every year, the school board and superintendent endorses our annual proclamation for the Hands and Words are Not For Hurting Week in October, encouraging all students, staff, and families to take the pledge in unity. Now, I wanted to ask you, can we implement this Purple Hand pledge in all of our schools? This is why. I believe all of our schools, pre-K through 12, can set that standard of safety by effectively implementing and sustaining our simple program in all of our schools. So when families move from one school to another and students move from elementary to middle and high school, it is the same simple commitment to take responsibility for our words and actions that, again, can either hurt, help, or heal. So it's accountability. It's not just information. Words from Vicki Dool, principal, now retired Walnut Middle School in Grand Island, Nebraska. She is one of our national board members. She says, "It was the cornerstone of all programs they taught. Believe in the power of the pledge. We lived it. We loved it." And that was a middle school, the large population of students in a very rough, as she would say, school with a lot of violence. Year after year, our own Pete Teller, incredible counselor, Leslie Middle School, has been here to the meetings.
Ms. Kelly, Mrs. Kelly. We have to ask our director Leppold to read the proclamation so that we can adopt it. So I would ask you to kind of wind down, and then we would like you to kind of lead us, so in the interest of time and so that we can get the proclamation voted on that.
Okay. I understand and I respect the timeline. But I did want to just say, maybe I should say after, maybe.
Yes, please. We will, we will have, towards the end, we are going to have some more time for non-agenda items. But I would like to request our director Leppold to read the proclamation, and then we have to proceed with adopting it. So Director Leppold, would you kindly read the proclamation for us, please?
Sure. Yeah, I'd love to. And right before I do, I'd like to point out that usually around this time of year, there's a month that Marion County, our state puts on the trees near the Capitol, blue ribbons for children that have been abused within Marion County. And usually, it's filled up with, you know, filled up with ribbons, right? And, you know, every time I drive by that, I think, I mean, those are just the ones that are reported. You know, and during this time of pandemic, you know, I was talking with some people, my friend over at Liberty House, Allison Kelly, you know, and as well as other organizations. And a lot of child abuse report cases and reportings are down about seventy-ish percent, a little bit more than that, I believe. And so I think it's important, as we're reading this, you know, to keep in mind and inform our neighbors, you know, to look out for signs. All righty, here we go. So this is the Hands and Not, Hands and Words are Not For Hurting proclamation. Whereas, a world without abuse and violence is a dream that we all share. And whereas, we acknowledge that any form of mistreatment of another is abuse. And whereas, abuse can be in the form of verbal, mental, or physical, and often escalates to further violence. And whereas, we believe that all people have the right to live free of abuse and violence. And whereas, we believe that every person can make a difference in stopping abuse and violence by not using violence to control others, by not tolerating any form of abuse from others, and by developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances based on respect and equality. And whereas, we recognize and support the efforts of district staff and our community in promoting respect and equality for all people, teaching conflict resolution behaviors, and helping students learn how to stop abusive cycles. And whereas, we recognize the Hands and Words are Not For Hurting Project's Purple Hands pledge is an effective tool in abuse and violence prevention education. Now, therefore, the Board of Directors of Salem-Kaiser Public Schools proclaims October eighteenth through the twenty-fourth of 2020 to be the twenty-third annual national Hands and Words are Not For Hurting Week in the Salem-Kaiser School District. We call upon our community to observe October eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as the Hands and Words are Not For Hurting Week and encourage everyone in our community to take the Purple Hands pledge. And will you be leading us in the pledge?
Yes, go ahead, and, you know, we're going to take a motion first and vote, and then.
I make the most of the proclamation.
Second.
Who is that who seconded?
Paul.
Oh, Kyla.
Okay, the motion was moved by Vice Chair Bethel and Director Kylo seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? I can't see all the faces. Okay, hearing none, are we ready to take a vote? And if you can show me different faces, then I can probably know who is voting. Dr. Dosinata, is there a way, a different view besides? Can I see? Oh, there you are.
Chair Ken, Chair Gary, I always just made myself a list when I started the meeting and would always just go down that list to help me make sure I didn't forget anybody.
A little hard of hearing, so I had to see the lips. Director Goss.
I vote aye in supportive.
Director Leppold.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Blassey.
Aye.
Director Hyam.
Aye.
Okay, and I also vote aye. So the motion passes, all seven in favor?
I vote aye as well.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's fine.
Thank you, Director Kylo. I just didn't see your, in my iPad. So is there anybody, I don't think there is anyone opposing it, so it motion passes. I'm going to quickly ask Mrs. Kelly to lead the board in this Hands pledge.
I'd be honored.
Please.
And Purple Hands bears right here with me. I will not.
I'm not.
I will not.
Use my hands.
Use my hands.
Or my words.
Or my words.
Hurting myself. Or others.
Or others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Kelly, and I so appreciate you being patient.
One thing, if you don't mind.
Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Kelly. I would like to move on because we have a few more items to cover. And then I would, you know, because of the time, because we took a little longer. And I would be definitely, I'll give you a call, or you can even send us a little email, and then we will definitely make sure we share it with the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, let's kind of go to the next item. The Student Investment Account Grant Agreement. Superintendent Perry, she would like to provide us a little bit of background and update on this.
All right, Dr. Sproles is going to walk you through this agenda item. And he's gonna, you've seen the executive summary in the board packet. We're assuming you've read it, and although the slides came out pretty late today, he'll move quickly through the slides. This is an important point, that you need to take action on this tonight so we can go ahead and submit our grant application to Oregon Department of Education. With that, Dr. Sproles, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, and Board Chair Chandra Geary, and board members. We have a bit of good news to talk about tonight, which is our Student Investment Account. And we, just to review quickly, the Student Investment Account is focused to meet students' mental and behavioral needs and also address academic achievement. And remember, it was focused specifically with an equity lens. It was, it was driven by a desire to meet the needs of students who may not be currently met in our current systems. So here's a quick timeline of the grant process. And I'm going to go over this quickly, but for the audience, for the community audience, we will be posting this on our website, both the PowerPoint and the grant application itself. And so if you'd like more information, I'm not rushing to purposefully rush to avoid going over the details. And it will be posted on our website. I'd love for people to look at it at that location. So remember, in fall 2019, we started our SIA process. It was an involved community listening process. We heard from literally thousands of students, staff, parents, community members throughout. We listened to folks in churches, in coffee shops, in their homes, in community centers, in our schools, throughout our community. Then in January 2020, our task force, which was led by Dr. Reginald Richardson, who is a representative from the NAACP, and Executive Director Adriana Miranda, who is Executive Director of CAUSA, led that task force to identify priorities that were then presented to the board in January. And then a plan was articulated in March and presented with the original grant application to all of you. And we received a vote to be able to move forward with that grant application. Unfortunately, as we all know, the world changed in mid-March. Soon as we took the vote on the grant application, we also started to take actions to respond to COVID-19. And it had actions for our system, but it also had actions on the corporate activity tax, which is the tax that funded the Student Success Act in the first place. So we've been kind of in a waiting pattern for several months, waiting to see what the tax revenues look like and how that will impact the grant. In August, we heard that we will be getting a reduced funding package, which we now have realized how much that will be, and an updated adoption process. And so I think it's important to realize, we didn't go back out and do an entire listening session again because we want to honor the voices of the people who devoted so much time to producing the original plan. So in October, the grant agreements were released, and that's what's before you today. So here, here are the requirements. We need to make the grant agreement available at the main office, which people probably won't come into our main office very much. And so we will post it on our website, like I said. We did allow for public comment tonight. And then we need to share it at a public meeting and receive approval from the board. And that's what we're requesting tonight. So our overall SIA plan objectives were to, first of all, make sure that the plan that we're submitting tonight aligns with the community values and priorities that we heard last year, and I'm confident that it does. We didn't know anything about comprehensive distance learning when we wrote this plan. I don't know who would have known that that's where the world would be today. So we needed to make some adjustments based on CDL and a distance learning environment. We wanted to hold true to the equity focus and to make sure that we target our supports to underserved students and families in a way that is true to the spirit of the SIA and honestly, true from what we heard from our community. And then I think it's important for the board to realize, this is, we're having about a third of the funding, but we're hoping to lay the groundwork for a fully funded SIA grant. The activities and the strategies identified are still the priorities of the district. Here's a quick summary of the SIA strategies at a glance. You'll notice that we have a strategy that hits every level of our district. We have language and literacy focus at the elementary schools. We have middle school language acquisition and math. We have ninth grade on track. We also have a very vibrant social and emotional support systems in the grant, which I'm sure you've all recognized. That comes in the form of additional counselors, additional social workers, additional community resource, support professionals, additional what we call C-SOCS, so Community Support and Outreach Coordinators, folks who are working in the community to support kids. We also have additional strong relationships with our mental health providers to be able to provide telehealth and teletherapy for our students as well. Those are all things that we identified through this process that are, that we need to maintain and even strengthen during comprehensive distance learning. Just to acknowledge, we've heard from our staff, we've heard from our students, mental health and social emotional supports are needed now more than ever. And so that's why we maintained a lot of those. We also want to make sure that we continue to get authentic engagement. Extracurricular activities were greatly reduced because we don't have school right now in person to have after school. So we have some of those, specifically, one of the board, one of the comments that you heard at the start of the, from the comment period was around our music program. And we have decided to support music as much as we can in a digital format. And that involved purchasing some extra materials. Of course, EBI, so our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Projects, staff training, culturally relevant pedagogy, and then also continuing for supports for diverse learners. What we found is, we haven't done very um, and then also continuing for supports for diverse learners. What we found is we haven't done very many IEPs, which are those individual education plans for students with disabilities and we have a backlog that we need to make sure that we get kids the supports they need. So we needed to provide extra supports, um, really a lot of schedulers and scheduling supports so our teachers can start meeting the needs of the students with disabilities um that we've had to put on pause because we haven't been able to bring kids in up to this point. So just as a, just at a glance, um, here's a summary of our SIA positions and activities. Um, we did it by bargaining unit because I think it's important to recognize that a lot of these um funds are still going to support licensed and classified staff, which are the heart and soul of our organization. These are the people who are delivering all of the strategies and activities. Um, I mentioned the community resource folks, the, the C-SOCS, the community support specialists. Those are all classified staff who are working side by side with our families. And then our licensed teachers are people like our ELD, which is English Language Development Teachers for our Newcomer Center, our Language and Literacy Teachers. Um, as we've spoke about before, having the grant application come in October when it's really hard to find fifty-two point five highly qualified and im- im- impactful teachers is, is a problem for us, um, because not a lot of teachers are looking for jobs in October. It's, it's just the way the, the hiring process goes. So um, so we have these positions right now, um, and we're going to be seeking them. We're actually posting them right away. We also have a big focus on professional development and curriculum. So twenty-one percent part of that was around culturally relevant curriculum and then part of that was to also create more interventions, reading and math interventions, particularly that can be delivered digitally, um, is where part of those funds go. Just a snapshot, these are the things we weren't able to fund. It's important to remember, we thought we were going to get about thirty-six million and we got about eleven and a half, which means we can't fund everything. Um, so that doesn't mean, so for the community members who are listening to this, please don't take this as that we don't think these are important. We do think these are important. We just aren't funding them this year out of this reduced um pocket and some of these um strategies will be funded from other sources. So um, the big one on there is the dual language expansion and coordination. We're still very much committed to a dual language expansion. During distance learning, um, we aren't delivering dual language in the way that we've always done it because teaching on the computer in two languages um is, is particularly hard. Um, but that is something that we still want to accomplish. It's still something that we deem, we think is important. Expanded after-school programs, we heard a lot from families about that. Probably, that was probably our number one thing we heard from families, expanded after-school um program. So we're very much um interested in doing that once we, once we get school back um in more of a regular setting. And then our ITCC, which are the interim therapy, therapeutic care classrooms. I believe a couple of board members might have visited them last year. Um, we're still committed to that model, um, even though it's um something that we can't expand until we get kids back. So here's our timeline moving forward, just a quick snapshot. Hopefully tonight, the board will approve the plan and complete the uh grant requirements that I mentioned at the start of the presentation. We were beginning to already hire SIA-related positions. Our advisory group, we have a community-based advisory group that I introduced you to at the last board meeting. Um, they will continue to meet and they um, they have the difficult job of figuring out how we're going to measure all of the impacts of these uh investments and what are the progress markers and what can those look like. Um, in the absence of having a lot of summative assessments and so those big assessments that we typically give, um, we're going to need to come up with more community-based assessments um to be able to monitor impact. Um, January for February, we'll revisit our current SIA plan and then we're going to begin planning for twenty-one, twenty-two, keeping our fingers crossed that that means a fully funded um SIA, which is what we're hoping for. And then March and April, I would anticipate that we will be back before the school board with the twenty-one, twenty-two plan, SIA plan, fully funded SIA plan. That's our goal. And I think that is it. Um, Superintendent Perry and Chair Shandra Geary.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Sprouls. Uh, I would like to kind of uh see if there's a motion to approve the Student Investment Account Grant Agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And who seconded?
Kathy.
Thank you very much. So Director Kylo moved the motion to approve the Student Investment Account Grant Agreement as presented. By Director Goss, is there a discussion on this? Uh, Director Leopold, go ahead.
Uh, sure. My first just small question is, uh, what, what's the deadline for this? When do we need to have this in by?
So Superintendent Perry or Director, uh, Dr. Sprouls?
I'm, I'm sorry to, to just jump in on that. Um, good question, Director Leopold. Um, as, as soon as we can get a board approval for this, we can um have it submitted to ODE and then they would release the funds for the positions that we're hiring. The sense of urgency on this, this is a plan that actually started getting funded in July. They retroactively um dated it back to July, even though we actually didn't get the grant agreements until October. So we feel a sense of urgency about getting these positions hired where they could support kids as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so with that, here's my big issue with this and why I'm not going to be able to support this unless this is in it. Something that I've been talking about since I've been on board, since before I've been on the board, is our, our dual language program is awesome. It's has proven success. Uh, and if our goal, you know, is, is equity, you know, our goal is to lift up communities who are underrepresented and if our goal is to hire more teachers and staff that look like our students, why would we not expand our dual language program as, as we said we were going to? Um, I think that is, uh, dual language, I think, is the future of education. And for us, we can't just hold back. Um, and I know you, you're gonna, uh, with the feedback I'm gonna get is, whoa, what would you take off? You could say that about any of these things. And so each one is very important, but dual language, especially in these times, in the moment that we're in, I think is going to make an astronomical difference in the long run for our students. And if anything, I think that us having online school makes it easier for us to do that because we can literally hire anybody from around the world because they don't have to be here right now. Um, and so honestly, right now is a good, great opportunity for us to do that, I think, instead of uh looking at it as a, as a hardship. But I know there wasn't negative intent and I know that a lot of this is great stuff. It's just, that is something that is so important to our community and it's the future of education and I, I'm not going to be able to support this without that in it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this?
I'd like to hear Superintendent Perry on that.
Do you want to jump in with what, what we're thinking on that, Craig?
I, I would like, I would like to and I, um, and then you can maybe add when I leave something out. Um, Director Leopold, I share your passion for dual language. You know that. Um, we've uh had these discussions for a long time and I also share your sense of urgency as a way to capitalize on the linguistic and racial and ethnic diversity of our community. Dual languages, I've never seen a, a, a program that does that in a more effective way, honestly. And I've, you know, I've run two dual language schools. Ethan has as well. So, um, so what we're planning this year to do is figure out a way to have a planning principle um in a dual language role to be able to start facilitating the acceleration of this when we come back. The logistics of delivering a dual language model, especially at the elementary school in a digital environment is very, very complicated. It's much more complicated than just having a Spanish-speaking teacher with the students. Our K through three students, and I'm sure you're hearing this in the community, are struggling even if in one language. Um, to present that in two languages for, for a student who's predominantly an English-speaking student, say, to have mu- to have a digital experience predominantly in Spanish, they have very little access to that content, very, very little. So don't take this as a, I knew this was going to be your first question, by the way, as well. And don't take this as a, we're stepping away from this. We heard loud and clear from, from our board, but also from our community. I think it's important to acknowledge and from our educators, the value of dual language, which is something we share. So what I'd commit to you is we will, we could report back if it would be helpful to the board, our planning process as we are planning to gear up for dual language. Um, and to be able to um think about what the next steps are for that.
And I think.
Thank you, Dr. Sprouls. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
Um, the only other reality I would say is that the person we would hire um would like to be a planning principal would come out of a principalship right now. And to do it, uh, when we were going to do that in um April or May, that was one thing, but to do it now, then it also requires us to take a, put a whole new prince, brand new principal into a school that is already, or I mean, this could be any school, right? Already under all kinds of pressures with CDL. We're a hundred percent committed to it. We've just shifted the strategy. And maybe, um, and I, I would agree with um Dr. Sprouls that I think um, if it feels like it's um something that the board wants to report back on for how we're planning, I think that would be good. It also puts um you in the loop of that to know that we're really committed to it.
Is there any other discussion on this topic? Go ahead.
So I just, I have two questions. One, specifically on Strategy Ten for the Equity Diversity and Inclusion. It's been quite the conversation for many years about the fact that we don't really invest hiring through our Grow Your Own program. And more recently, in the last couple of months, I've had a lot of folks in the community come to me and say, we have lots of opportunity and then they interview and don't get hired. So is there an opportunity for this admin secretary to really focus on the strengths of those grow your own uh individuals to really seek them out and keep them and hire them into our, our district through this opportunity?
Um, so I would tell you that we already um track that um through HR and we also um have a um a kind of a, a mentorship uh process within that. Um, I don't know um specifically um who has reported to you or what the um so I, I wouldn't know which program they're in. Um, but what I'll tell you is that um with our um diversity pathways dollars, uh Steve Nelson mentors um all the way um through with some, um, I don't know, I wouldn't say he's the direct mentor, but he has some um individual, um, you know, we do um mock interviews. We do uh group meetings. So um with those, and we know, especially for those that we give direct dollars to, that we um, we actually want them to come work for us. We've invested in them. So um even our, you know, bilingual scholars, um, I was online with our graduates and we were talking about where they were placed. Um, this year, it hasn't probably been our best year because of um the lateness of the hiring season, but I, I couldn't tell you today that they haven't all been picked up. So um, and we have to remember also, we're in a uh teacher shortage and uh that is more magnified um than ever. Um, so I would have to really know what the individual cases are, but um, Steve keeps track of every single one of, uh, one of those. And some people decide they get in it too and they decide, mm, no, not going to do this. Um, our special ed uh cohort, not everyone uh makes it all the way through, but we're short special education teachers every year.
And Director, Director Bethel, if I may add, um, I've been working closely with Steve Nelson on the Grow Your Own um project and we are in the process of developing strategies uh for ex- uh expanding on the grow your own opportunities and coming up with strategies to make um going into the teaching profession more, profession more lucrative for, for uh undergrads at Western Oregon University as well as other, other local universities. I was actually just in conversations with um members from the UO Department of uh, UO uh College of Ed as well as their Ethnic Studies Program as well to discuss the possibility of, of a career panel in January.
Awesome. Then I have one more question, just a kind of point of clarification on um Strategy Seven. Yeah, the McGinty Vento Advocates description doesn't have the word student in it, but the position classification does. And so I'm just curious, are those adult positions or are they student positions that we're working with students?
Uh, adult positions. Um, they're the, just like our McKinney Vento ac- advocates that we have right now, the expansion.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. That's all. Good job.
Is there any other questions or discussions on this topic? Yeah, go ahead.
Quick question.
Who is that? Uh, I, sorry. Was it Director Blassey?
Yeah, um, just a question. Thank you about the after-school programs. I know we weren't able to fund them right now because of the reduction. Can you remind us, though, where we are for um when we come back to school um with the closure of SCEF and shift in some of the after-school programs to um other programs in the community? Do we know kind of where we stand um on capacity for after-school programs? I um, I'll tell you that we know that the Y and the Boys and Girls Club were taking um over a bunch of those. I don't know where they are at capacity right now because their model has shifted. Um, we're also in uh conversations with United Way around a um some of the other things uh that SCEF did. I don't see United Way as being a service provider in that sense. That's more um the direction of the Boys and Girls Club in the Y. They've been really um instrumental right now in picking up um different kinds of care for kids during uh comprehensive distance learning. Thank you.
Uh, Director Leopold, did you have?
Uh, yeah, I, I just want to say I really appreciated the response from uh Superintendent Perry uh and Mr. Sprouls. Um, I did just want to push back on that and just say that there's, I, I see where you're coming from and I understand. Uh, I mean, there's a ton of good stuff. I love everything that's in this, right? But at the same point, there's always going to be an excuse. There was an excuse last year, year before that, year before that, year before, since the beginning of time. There's always an excuse. And so I just, I don't think that's a good enough reason. And so uh, uh, I'm not going to be able to vote yes for this because of that. Um, just because of that, I think that's vital to our school system and what we need and I don't, I, I can't see myself voting yes on this without it. However, after the pass, of course, we're one voice. And so I will support and cheer on each of these things that we have. But that's something that we have to as a board, make sure that we hold ourselves in the district accountable to is making sure that we don't forget about this because that is one hundred percent vitally important.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Jesse, is it that it's not as much about the position of a coordinator? You'd like to see it listed in a strategy?
Uh, both. Because I mean, it like Jim Green used to always say, you know, you, we, we got to put our money where our, where our mouth is.
Okay.
And I don't see, I see your mouth saying nice things, which is true and I believe you. It's just, I don't see the money going in that same direction.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? I have just a quick uh thought. With this SIA dollars and our regular budget, is there any way for students to kind of sign up for selected classes outside their zip code? Because you really look at it from an equity point of view, why should in a digital world, they should be tied to their own zip code? So if there is a, there are three dual-lingual immersion classes, as schools were there in our system before all this started, right? If somebody say from a zip code where there is no such school, can they tie up uh sign up for that? Or can they sign up for a special class elsewhere outside so that at least on a small basis, we can start thinking of using the equity lens and giving opportunity for people. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Um, the answer is actually yes. Um, those three um schools are open to um application inter-district transfer process. One of our um uh worries about the schools right now is the ability to have enough um students that are native Spanish speakers, which is really important. And a lot of the application come from English speakers, which speaks to the um uh strength and the goodness of the program, but also we really need to, to have true dual language, need to balance out those. Um, if we, um, the next uh dual-language uh school would be more of an East Salem school where we have um a lot um more Spanish speakers um to have access to that. And again, um, it's also, um, you can then also open up um to others. So we already uh practiced that with specialized programs um as it is. Hadiya.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Shandra Geary, can I just make one point? I just want to acknowledge.
Doctor Shandra Giri, can I just make one point? Just want to acknowledge. We do have Spanish language instruction going on in twenty-one of our elementary schools. And so we have teachers teaching in Spanish in this digital environment across our district. Three schools in particular are the immersion model that we're talking about here, which is the, which is the Spanish and English immersion. But we have Spanish language instruction in our literacy squared. Model going on throughout the district. And so we, just to, just to acknowledge that. Teachers are working really, really hard to, for students who speak Spanish as their home language to meet their needs in Spanish. In the digital environment. So I don't want to discount, I don't want to in some way. Discount all the work that's going in right now in those classrooms.
Yeah, thanks for that too, because we folk, we're focusing on the dual, which is just three schools. And we're, we've got our bilingual teachers in front of kids right now in ways they never expected.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of all confusing right now because. With third grade, if they are able to read English, then it kind of gives them a better chance of graduation. So. I don't know how those outcome metrics for equity indicators will apply in this day and age. I don't know.
In, in the, in our plan, and I don't know if you're referencing this, Doc, or Chair Shandra Giri. It's to have all of our students be bilingual and biliterate by fifth grade. Because we're recognizing that students are learning, are, are learning two languages. And that might take them a little bit longer. I don't know if you could hear that. My family's watching Boltergeist next door, so I apologize.
That's good. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Is there any other question before we take a vote on this motion? Vice Chair Bethel, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I was just laughing at.
All right. So are we ready to, is there anybody wants to?
We have a motion and a second. I think you just need to call for the vote.
Okay, who's got, so are we ready for, who was the one? Paul was the one who raised the motion and Director Gos. Second, and that was student investment account grant agreement. Now we are ready to vote, I suppose. Hearing no other discussion. Director Gos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lapold.
Oh, no.
Okay, Vice Chair Bethel.
Yes.
Director Blassey.
Aye.
Director Kylo.
Aye.
Director Heim.
Aye.
And I, Satya Chandragiri also vote aye. So we have one no, Director Lapold, and all others vote aye. So the. So it passes, the outcome is it passes the student investment account grant agreement as presented passes. So we'll go to the next one. Approve the amendment to employment contracts for Assistant Superintendent Dr. Craig Spols. Executive Director for Human Resources, Dr. John Blackbite. And Chief Operation Officer, Miss Mike Wolf. Superintendent Perry would like to give us a background on this.
Yeah, this is just to update the employment contracts to match. All the other contracts in the district right now and employment provisions. Around Senate Bill ten forty-nine, which is the retirement provision. And our, I think we told you when we had that come through last time. That we were going to work to get all these updated and we're just now, I think COVID made us forget about it. This isn't any signal that any of these individuals are planning for retirement at this point or. Not, but they are just to get the contracts updated. So you don't have to worry that you're going to lose all three, which was a worry before.
I move that we adopt the amendments to the con, to their contracts.
Thank you. Who was that? Who seconded?
Danielle.
Okay, Vice Chair. So Director Kylo moved the motion and Vice Chair. Bethel, that, is there any discussion on this? I can't see anybody else. I didn't hear anyone. Hearing none, seeing none. Are we ready to take a vote on this motion? The motion on table is amendment to employment contracts for Assistant Superintendent Dr. Craig Spols. Executive Director for Human Resources, Dr. John Bite and Chief Medical, Chief Operation Officer, Mr. Mike Wolf. So Director Gos, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Lapold.
Aye.
And Director Blassey.
Aye.
Director Kylo. Did, did, did I hear Director Kylo?
Aye.
Okay. Director Heim.
Aye.
And Satya Chandragiri, I vote aye. So it passes all seven. And I didn't hear anyone, no. So amendment as presented to the employment contracts passes. Now we go to the consent calendar.
Chair Chandragiri, could we take a quick break?
Okay, all right. Yes, let's take a five minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I was not mindful. And we're going to the next item, the consent calendar. Are we ready to kind of approve the?
I move the consent calendar as written.
Okay, who was that?
Sharon.
Okay.
I second it. This is Bethel.
Okay, it's good. Is there any discussion? I am not hearing any discussion. So hearing none, are we ready to take a vote on this? Director Gos.
Aye.
Director Lapold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Blassey.
Aye.
Director Kylo.
Aye.
Director Heim.
Aye.
And B Satya Chandragiri, aye. So it kind of, it passes as presented the. The consent calendar as presented with the. And so what's the next item? So we go to the section of readings. Director Lapold is going to present. The first reading of revision to board governance policy. Addition of student advisor to the school board. Director Lapold.
Sure. I mean, I would, I would like to start by saying that. You know, this is something I've been. Talking about, you know, I've gotten on the board and I'm really glad that we're able to be talking about it in the boardroom today. I mean, this is something, it's nothing new. I mean, there's been, there've been many board members. Many boards throughout the country that have had a student be on their school board. And I think that something that I always felt, you know, growing up was. That my voice never, my voice didn't matter, you know, and even as I got on the board, I mean, love you guys and love the previous board too, but there were times when. You know, I felt like I wasn't taken seriously. And I mean, I mean, of course, over time, you learn to overcome those things, but you know, especially as a student. You know, a lot of times students feel like they don't have any input or say anything. And this is like a way. Of us to systemically put systems in our school board, like in our boardroom. In those conversations that we're having. And so, and while that student, right, they can't speak on behalf of every student. But what it will do is it's us acting in an equitable way to show. That our kids' voices matter and to get a perspective, you know, that even me, you know, being, being really young. You know, graduated not that long ago. Even the one that maybe even I, that's different than mine, for example. And so I think it's, this is an ongoing thing. And it's, it's going to be really cool and it's actually not that big of an addendum. It's just an addendum, it's an addendum to BG eleven. And it's going to state annually, appoint a student advisor to the board. As a non-voting member. The student must have one year of experience on the district-led student equity committee slash student advisory committee. So it's a non-voting member, but whenever we need input, input and they can give recommendations and they can. You know, be there when we have questions about stuff. And then also the fact that they're on the equity committee and that they're, they have to have one year of experience on the equity committee. Shows that they're committed to the equity work that we are also committed to. And so we're not just getting like a random student, which any student would be great. But this is a student focused on equity, which is one of our big missions. And. I, I've seen, of course, what this would mean logistically, and Paul Kyler raised this question. So thank you, Paul. It was, since they're a non-voting member, right, they wouldn't be allowed in executive sessions because a lot of those would be about other students. Right? Or like legal things. However, in these regular board meetings or board meetings that are public board meetings. Then they would be able to be a part of the conversation and participate.
Well, thank you very much, Director Lapold. Is there any discussion on this or any feedback from other board members?
I have a question.
Director Kylo, go ahead.
Jesse, how do you envision this particular student being selected? What process and by whom would they be selected?
Sure. So the, the policy here says that the, that we would, the board would appoint a student advisor. And so having it worded this way leaves it up to us. I would, my vision for this was similar to the budget committee. To where students can, students from that equity committee can apply. Or do some sort of thing that we can work with the district to make sure that we have a fair and equitable way that we do this. But I would assume it would be similar to the budget committee. Process.
Thank you.
And then, uh, uh, because Danielle raised the question of, hey, well, hey, how are the. The students picked for the equity committee? Like, how, how does that work? And I was wondering if someone from the district, Superintendent Perry or. Craig or someone could touch on how student, how the student equity committee works. So that way, everyone has a clear understanding.
Yeah, we're doing a little bit of a shift on the student equity committee to have it be more of an advisory committee. So it really states their job is to advise, but it's, it starts in the high schools. Where they will have a student advisory committee. And then from there, there will be several members from that group that feed into a district advisory committee. And then you would choose from the district advisory committee. So it is really, we were. We'd already had an equity committee that represented all our high schools and they met monthly. Before that, we had a high school advisory committee type structure. So it's evolved over time. But this is a way that it fully helps kind of inform the system. So because they'll have knowledge from that larger group that's a district group, they'll be able to bring that knowledge forward. And because each of the, of the district group students will have knowledge from their home high school, from their advisory group there. It'll help bring that. So it's, it's a really nice time with how we've shifted the advisory groups. And I want to do a really large shout out to North Salem High School at this point. Because this was Assistant Principal Carlos and his student advisory group. That brought forward this idea to us about shifting, kind of how the advisory structure worked. And they really like being helpful in advising on decisions of the district. And have already been involved on a number of things, just the North Salem High School group. To pick how you wanted.
Is there a way to see, can I kind of see all the other face? This is, I'm having a hard time figuring out where the voice coming from.
Sorry, this is Director Bethel. I have a question of Director Lapold, actually. So. I actually think this is a really brilliant idea. Lots of our. Agency partners as far as city councils and, and whatnot throughout the state do this. We in Kaiser have a student liaison that sits on our Kaiser City Council and they do a really great job. Their year is the school year, so they're September to June. And my question for you is, is what's, what's next? I, I anticipate that this is going to pass today and we're going to move the next steps. And so what are you? Willing to do to facilitate that application process and efforts on behalf of the board to not put the burden on the district and staff? To get the, the wheels going on this?
Uh, no, that's, that's a great question. I mean, for the following years, right, we can have this happen a little bit earlier because it's already October. So that we kids can get the full September to June, the best that we can. For this year, to implement it, I mean, we could, as soon as this is passes, the next month, say it passes. Then I would be more than willing to just work with the district to, because they already have the, the students and the equity committee is already there. The student advisory committee. And so just, I'd probably just meet with them, sit down, have a chat and say, hey, when do you think would be a fair deadline and are any of you guys interested? And then we could even get them on the following month in December. And then from there, we, that's when we could have the deadline and starting the new year. So it'd just be for half a year this year, just because we're just starting. But then they could start that just from January to June. And the next year, we would try to get it the first couple of weeks of September. And then it could be ran by the student advisory committee. Or by the board, I'd be more than willing to do it.
Might I suggest you look out, look to the city of Kaiser's process to see if there's things that you can replicate rather than reinvent? Thanks for doing that.
Good call. Thank you, Danielle. I will.
Very good.
So I have a question.
Discussion on that? Yeah, go ahead, Director Blassey.
Thank you. Jesse, what other districts have, have this in place? I'm curious. I'd kind of like to take a look. I like the idea. I just want to take a look at how they, they have it laid out. Because it's, it's great that you're, you're offering to do this, but. You know, that, that's not a, that's not putting a system in place, having one board member who may or may not. Still be on the board as this goes forward, responsible for this. So I'd like to look to see what other districts have done. I'm just curious how, how it's handled.
And I'll just do a quick response. There might be a, be a policy through OSBA that they've already laid out for this election. There, there might be. I'm not sure about that.
Okay. What other district?
Director Blassey, yeah, Director Blassey, I was in that OSB annual conference that I believe Hillsborough. School District has a. A student school board member, just like Director Lapold's suggestion. So that's an example. Thank you for bringing that up.
And, and what I'll do, that was the example I was going to use, but I know from the National School Boards Associations. Meeting and my talks with other board members from other states as well. It's not as popular in Oregon, but other states have it a lot. And so what I could do is, in fact, I'll send all of you guys like a list separately, of course, that way it's not craziness. Like a list of some other districts and what they have, and maybe just attach their policy on it so you can see it. But that's a good point. It needs to be a systemic thing, not reliable on one board member.
I have a question.
Uh, Director Heim.
Yes, thank you. In our policy, are we going to lay out an expected code of conduct? For the new non-voting board member? Or will they follow our code of conduct? I mean, how, how will that? Be? Do they follow our, our other board rules? I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah, they would have to follow our same rules. They just can't vote.
Thank you.
Director Lapold. Would you envision having a separate board governance policy to systematize this? As a student, non-voting representative, just like Chair's role is, has got a separate policy. Would you suggest something like that so that it can continue beyond one director holding it and then? As Director Blassey was saying, if there is a change, it shouldn't fall apart.
Uh, no, I don't believe that's gonna, that's necessary. We can put a system in place without it being a separate BG. One, because one thing I think is highly important that we need to keep in mind. Because I mean, I felt this when as an adult, a twenty-one who worked my butt off to get elected, right? And I still kind of felt this way. Is we need to make sure that they feel respected and heard. And so I want them to feel equal to us, not like as if their voice, voice doesn't matter. And so to have a separate BG would be kind of like treating them different. And so I want to make sure that they get the same. And so I want to make sure that they get the same amount of respect, uh, and, um, time that we get.
Uh, no, not, I didn't, uh, let me clarify this on the record. I didn't mean that way because the selection process is going to be, it has to be kind of clarified. So I was just wondering if we had, needed a separate, uh, policy which say, states some of the concerns or some of the observation that was brought up, selection, what they can sit, what they cannot sit. You know, the executive session, for example, you mentioned. So where will all that sit inside? Maybe, uh, Mr. Decopolas, you can share that?
Well, I think this is a, this is a, a, a new idea. And, you know, I was just looking at the website for the Hillsborough School District. They have three advisors, student advisors on there, um, uh, that, that do work with the board. I think what we need to do is study the best practices on what kinds of policies that we would need to have in place. They're not board members. They can't be. I mean, the statute defines who can be a board member, um, and how they're elected. So, uh, let's, uh, if the board, uh, is interested in moving forward with this concept, I think what we do is bring you, uh, some ideas on how best to articulate that. I mean, we're obviously not going to do that tonight, but, uh, we need to study this a bit.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you for that. So is there anything else? Because for the sake of time, are, are we kind of ready to move to the next, uh, section? And I want to say thank you, Director LePold, for bringing this wonderful concept. And, uh, uh, I really like it. I just want you to know that, just that we can make sure that all these things are addressed. So that's, uh, it doesn't get bogged down on technical grounds. So let's move to the next section. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Perry for the reports. Superintendent Perry?
All right, so, um, I got to see where we are, so I'm going to have to move on to the next slide. The next one is Executive Limitation, uh, Report Number Five. And, um, you have had a chance to read this in your, um, board packet ahead of time. And then, um, John Bate, are you still on the line? I was going to ask you if you'd just highlight a couple of things.
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, thank you Superintendent Perry. I'd be, uh, happy to just highlight a couple of issues in the Executive Limitation Five. This report, uh, doesn't contain any, uh, evidence of non-compliance in the areas enumerated. And I just wanted to highlight that as it relates to compensation, later this school year, we will enter into successor bargaining with our Teachers Association, where we'll have an opportunity to revisit that. Uh, and then the following year for our classified staff, as the contract comes due, um, at that time. And then the last piece, um, as it talks about professional development here, I just wanted to highlight for the board that, uh, we continue to pivot in all of these changing times and ways that we address professional development. Um, and there'll be, um, more specifics in next year's report highlighting many of the ways in which we're continuing to do that.
It's, some of the, you know, reports are like we've had two years and one. When we look back to last year, there was the pre-COVID year and there was the COVID year, all in one year.
Okay.
All right, uh, next we have Division Twenty-Two Report. And, uh, Dr. Udosnata is going to jump on and do that report quickly for you as well.
Thank you Superintendent Perry and Chair Shonda Gary, apologies. So really quick, uh, the Division Twenty-Two Report is a report that we do annually. Last year it came out in February and this year the Oregon Department of Education requested that the report be, uh, submitted by November first. Um, just a quick overview because, um, you all received our formal report in your board packet. I just want to highlight some of the key, uh, things to keep in mind when considering the Division Twenty-Two standards. First, um, the Division Twenty-Two standards is a subsection of OARs that guide elementary and secondary education in the state of Oregon. The rules do identify the minimum number of requirements for school districts that they must meet, um, as identified by the, but, uh, Oregon legislation, so the ORSs, and also defined by ODE, which is, uh, what captured in the OARs. And that this year's reports also reflect, uh, current and ongoing legislative changes, uh, to school requirements. As you can see right here, uh, we are in compliance of all the Division Twenty-Two standards. Uh, examples of standards are diploma requirements, curriculum, pro, um, curriculum and program and assessment requirements, state assessments, records and reports, uh, instructional minutes, et cetera. Normally within the Division Twenty-Two requirements, there's 54 separate rules. Uh, this year's, uh, number of required assurances was reduced by the state because, uh, of COVID-19, um, and with the school year, uh, being, uh, altered in, in March, it was difficult for schools to meet, uh, requirements such as seat time. Also, state testing was waived, so those are some of the, so that, those are some of the, um, rules that aren't represented in this year's report because they were waived. Lastly, there were two, uh, requirements in, um, our, our division requirements in 2018, 19 that we didn't meet, but, um, we have, uh, resolved. Those were with, um, elementary, social studies, curriculum and PE and health standards. And again, this year, we are in compliance of all the standards.
Thank you, Dr. Udosnata.
All right, um, the next report is just the Community Bond Oversight Committee, um, update. And, um, it's just the minutes from CIBOC. And I'm going to, um, let Mike jump on for just a minute in case you have questions for him. But I also, Mike, I'm hoping you can just report about the, out about the transportation bond sale. And that's might be catching him off guard.
Uh, sure. Uh, good evening. So just a, a quick rundown of the, the CIBOC, uh, meeting. Uh, we had the Waldo ribbon cutting and tour. We gave the program overview. There's one project that we would consider at risk, but we have mitigation plans in place. That's Hayesville. Um, we have substandard construction products, uh, basically the tilt-up walls of the, of the multipurpose PE room. But again, um, as I'd mentioned, we, um, we have plans in place, uh, to mitigate that. This was the first CIBOC meeting since we had issued, uh, the final issuance of the bonds. And so updated on the financials, the $51.5 million in additional premiums, bringing our total, uh, premiums for the 2018 bond to $116.5 million. A total approved program of $701 million with $87 million in, uh, contingency funds. So, um, all in all, um, a pretty good report for the bond. And if there are no questions about that, I can tell you that we, um, we had an extremely positive, uh, bond sale for our, um, full faith and credit obligation bonds to support the transportation infrastructure package, which just as a reminder, will, uh, purchase nearly 200, uh, buses and build a new, excuse me, transportation facility on Gaffin Road. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll just make a comment too, um, for the amount, and I think I say this every time, the amount of projects that, uh, Mike and his team are managing during an already, uh, really stressed system with COVID that we are, um, delivering in the way we're delivering is, um, I guess I would say almost nothing short of remarkable. So, um, thank you, uh, Mike, uh, for your leadership and the leadership of your team.
Thank you.
Director Shonda Gary, this is Danielle. I have a comment. I just want to kind of echo what Superintendent Perry just said, but also say, um, we have really an amazing communications team and each ribbon cutting seems to get better and better. And I especially loved doing the Waldo ribbon cutting live on Facebook. It added an extra element of excitement. And the students did a phenomenal job and just really added the student personality that I think may have been missing in one or two that I've seen before. So thanks to just all the staff that are really putting in a lot of effort to make sure everybody's included in those, through these really challenging COVID times. And if you haven't had a chance to really go on Facebook and see those videos, I would encourage the community to go do so because it's, it's really just a treat to be able to see it, especially before the halls get filled with students, um, in the near future. Because all the walls are very clean right now on these new buildings and they look very shiny and great. So, thank you.
I, I, I have something to say. You know, with all the doom and gloom and everybody's kind of going through hardship, I think miracles do happen in our community. And, uh, you know, it's such a beautiful thing to see, uh, these buildings come up and, uh, you know, and, uh, I just kind of visualize how it'll get filled with students. And it's kind of going to be really a great experience when the students start coming back and for them to see, it's almost like extreme makeover overnight. They just went home and came back. It's magical. Thank you Superintendent Perry, Mr. Wolf and the entire team. You guys are miracle maker. Thank you. We are so grateful to have all of your, now, community kind of guiding this whole thing. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say real quick, um, you know, with, uh, Director Bethel, Director Hyden and I, you know, have been on this committee since, I don't know, after the bond was approved. But, uh, and it's, and it's remarkable, like, uh, Superintendent Perry was saying. I mean, just how, uh, uh, you know, Mike Wolf, you and your team and our district have been able to, handle the, the process in, in such a great way to where even during a time of economic hardship like we're in, that we're still in a great financial position. We went into this meeting and at the end of it, uh, they were like, well, here's the deal. We're in a better financial position than we were in last quarter, which, uh, which, you know, is always a great thing to hear. And I love how, uh, these events, you know, especially the one, this one at Waldo, right? Was centered around kids. These kids from Waldo, Waldo went up and spoke. They're the ones who cut the ribbon. Usually it's the fancy pants people, uh, but I really liked, uh, seeing these kids go up there and, you know, talk, talk about how much they're, how excited they are for their school and be the ones to cut their ribbon and celebrate that. So, thank you, guys.
Good job.
All right, um, I think this might be our last report tonight is the District COVID Updates. And, um, I think we're starting with Dr. Spruils. And then somewhere in the middle there, uh, we're going to switch to Director Ramirez and then to, uh, Dr. Udosnata. So, uh, Dr. Spruils, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So these are just our quick, um, board, um, COVID updates. The difference now is that we have some, um, actions that we've decided to take as a district that we, uh, needed to present to the school board and our greater community. So the, the first slide here shows what we all probably know on this call is that we are experiencing another rise in our COVID-19 cases throughout the state, but also particularly in Marion County. About a month ago, we dipped down to 56 per, uh, 100,000, 56 cases per 100,000. And I came to you and said, it's a very optimistic trend. We're hoping to get close to that 30 per 100,000 mark that we could think about K3 blended learning. We were, uh, we were starting to, to sense some optimism. And since that time, I, uh, I think I jinxed this because we have been, uh, going back up since that time. Unfortunately, our current case count is 82.5, which is the second highest, um, that we've had since April. And concerning as well, our test positivity case is almost back up to the double digits again. It's at 9.3%. And just for a, a decision-making matrix, we have to be below 30 for three consecutive weeks to bring back our youngest learners. We have to be below 10, um, per 100,000 to bring back, um, 412. And we have to be below 5% test, test positivity for the state and for the county. So, um, these numbers have been very, very difficult to move, as, as we all know, which has forced us to make some decisions, um, moving forward. So just as a, a reminder to our community, we're in stage two of our comprehensive distance learning model. This means all of our students are participating in, uh, distance learning at home. Now that we know we're going to be in this for a while, I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about limited in-person instruction and what that can look like and how we're planning on offering that to, to support students, um, who are struggling to be successful in, in this mode and in this model. Um, unfortunately, um, we have more students struggling than we're going to be able to provide supports. I think it's, uh, important to acknowledge until we can get to a blended model. Um, and we all need to take our own personal actions to get there. So during stage two, um, for K3, um, we, uh, the district is proposing to continue to monitor the data. Remember K3 has a different metric, um, than fourth through 12th. We're still hopeful that that metric will get below 30 per 100,000 for three consecutive weeks when we can revisit our blended model. Honestly, we, we, we need to, we need to turn the tide and start dropping back down, um, to be able to anticipate what that is. We will have plenty of time to, um, let our community know if and when we're going to be able to return. This doesn't turn on a dime. Um, we're going to be able to let our community know if we're going to initiate a K3 blended model. For fourth, 12th, um, as a district, we've decided to extend comprehensive distance learning until the end of first semester. This is not good news for any of us. This is not what our teachers want to hear. I think it's important for people to realize our teachers, um, don't want to extend distance learning any more than our students want to exist in this, um, for a long time. Our staff, um, would love to be able to welcome kids back. But following the current metrics where we're at, we can't do that right now. Um, we are going to begin expanding our targeted group instruction, which is something I'd like to talk with you about, um, today a little bit. We've also decided to extend the transfer window between Edge and CDL. Originally, we said students may be able to transfer back in mid-November. The, because we thought we may be in a blended model in mid-November. It's important to remember about six weeks ago, we were hopeful, um, uh, particularly for K3, um, by mid-November. But we're not going to be there. So we've decided to extend that window. Parents and, and students can start requesting transfers as early as November 9th. Extend it through December 4th. That'll give us time to plan for those transfers and, and figure out where students are going to begin in their new setting, starting February 2nd, which is the first day of second semester. Um, this is a K12. This is for all students transferring either to Edge or from Edge back to their, um, homeschool CDL program. And there'll be a lot of information posted about how families to access this, not only on the district website, but also pushed out through our social media channels. Here is what, um, Superintendent Perry, I just have to call you out. She does not like this acronym. And I'm trying to come up with a different acronym, but everybody calls it LIPPI.
No, it's Limited In-Person.
Yeah, so she just wants us to say Limited In-Person. So I'm going to try to say that, um, and not call it LIPPI, uh, because it's an awful acronym. But for limited in-person instruction, here is what ODE has set the guidelines for. We can only bring in kids in groups of 10 or fewer, and they can only be in for two consecutive hours a day. So even limited in-person, this does not replace an educational experience. This is groups of 10 for only two hours a day. For our adults, this includes our hard-working classified staff and our licensed staff. They can only work with three groups of students a day and a total of five per week. So maximum, one licensed staff or classified staff could only work with 50 kids a week. This cannot replace CDL for any of our students. Um, it also doesn't meet the needs, um, of our students who are, um, specified what needs they have in their individual, um, uh, education plans, which is called their SDI, specially designed instruction. Um, and it also can't be required for our students learning English. So we can't require a student to come in for these two hours. We need to provide it above and beyond what they're already getting in CDL. So for our, for our district, we are, um, beginning in targeting group inspection. We actually have a pilot program running this week, um, to be able to work out the kinks. To be able to work out the kinks. And I would just like to recognize. The staff and students at Highland Elementary and Principal Cheever. As being the first person out of the gates to be able to start our limited. Um, in-person small group instruction this week. She has a group of twenty students. Who are benefiting coming in Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, and we were following all of our blueprint documents and, and guidelines. So. The students are being screened, we're being recorded, we're being, we're following them throughout the day. We're sanitizing, following our sanitation procedures. Students are wearing facial cover and facial masks. Responding in a, in a way that they can maintain their six feet. We're following our square footage requirements. All of the things that we know are best practice to keep kids and staff safe, um, will follow in limited in-person instruction. We're hoping to expand then not only to middle schools and high schools, but to more elementaries. Um, we're adding eight or nine elementaries next week. And then as we learn from week to week, we're expanding throughout. We hope to have some form of small group instruction going on every school, every campus, um, as soon as possible. We deeply believe that given the current, uh, numbers where we know. Um, we're not going to be coming back in a blended model anytime soon. We need to identify kids immediately who need supports and start getting them those in-person supports. Not to replace CDL, but to augment it or supplement it. So Director Ramirez, are you, uh, are you on here to talk a little bit about OSAA?
Yes, I am. Thank you. So I wanted to, um, good evening to everyone first. But I would like to review the OSAA Season One Activities and Timelines. What this really is, um, maybe in the simplest form, is an extension of what we do during the summer in terms of conditioning. And, um, so. With the, with the ADs and our, um, staff at District Office, the DOC, Mike and his team. We, um, created a, a schedule that you can see here. That kind of breaks it up basically into three different like sub-seasons, season eight, one A, one B, one C. They all have, um. The equal amount of days to, for participation in terms of eighteen, um, slots for those, uh, periods. So let's go through season one. Here's an example, season one A. That would be a priority period for spring sports. What priority means is you would, you would have the opportunity. To have three, uh, workout sessions right now for spring sports. And fall sports and winter sports as usually you see there, second and third priority. They'd have the opportunity for twice. Um, a week for participation for students. This is all voluntary. Um, if students, um, would like to participate, we have those opportunities. You go to season one B, you see that the priority shifts to fall sports and music. And then you see priorities two and three become winter and spring sports. And then leading up into, um. You see the break there for Thanksgiving. That's the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, that December window is a priority for winter sports and then spring and fall music. Are the second and third priority in terms of having to gain that opportunity. For, uh, twice a week compared to the priority winter sports in season one C that has three, um, you could have up to three slots. So. That's the, um, the plan with OSAA. They started, uh, this week. So far, uh, things are going well. We're having students engaged from all schools. So excited about that. Uh, excited, um, just to be engaging with kids. Being around them. And obviously we're following, uh, all the safety protocols and going through that. Different than. Than the guidelines that are through ODE. This is through OHA and OSAA that we're following all the safety guidelines. And we do have some experience with them because we did them, uh, for graduation. And we did them all summer, um, well, for most of the summer during, during, uh, workouts. Any questions?
I'm going to have, uh, Dr. Odozina Ta go on to music. Um, and then I. Because I think the music might be just a little different than what's on this slide.
Yeah. And I'm just going to do a mic check. I got a notice. Could people hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, so I, I want to give you some updates on music. I have, I have some good news and also some clarifications when it comes to our, our music programming. One thing that I want to really underscore and clarify is that, um. Music, while it, a lot of times it, uh, our, our music activities occur after school. They don't fall under the same, uh, jurisdiction. They don't always fall under the same jurisdiction as OSAA. And so OSAA has different guidelines for, um. Being able to conduct activities while we're in re-entry in phase one and phase two. They, the OSAA, uh, well, I won't get into that. What I will do, what I say is that the, the music falls under ODE guidance. And so instead of, um. Students, uh, perhaps in choir or in orchestra. Being able to, um, conduct the same types of activities that say cross-country or, um, football is able to do after school. They, they would, um, fall under the ODE guidance. And so, uh, what this means, I apologize, what this means is that. Students participating in after-school music programs would count against that two hundred and fifty threshold for limited in-person instruction. And what that, that does is it affects our ability to bring students in who need academic interventions such as reading. Special, uh, services, uh, and another academic, uh, and other, other reasons that we're bringing small, limited in-person, uh, groups in. And so, but that being said, we are trying to maximize opportunities and entry points for music virtually. And I'll show you in the next couple of slides how we're doing that, um, our plans for doing so, both in, uh, for secondary students and elementary students. So let's start with the secondary students. First, let's start with marching band. Now, what I say here might sound a little contradictory to what I just said in the previous slide. We had quite the time over the last week trying to suss this out. So I'll just start with the good news. Which is that, um, we have been able to resume marching band as of yesterday. So we, students are, uh, at the high schools are able to participate in formation, guard. There's no instruments with the exception of percussion. Uh, marching band, according to OSAA, uh, does fall under the athletic cohort guidance. Um, if there's no instruments. So right now, we, uh, at full disclosure, we're unsure if adding percussion puts this back under the ODE and limited in-person instruction. But we stand prepared to make adjustments based on guidance by both, uh, ODE and OSAA. Also, other good news is that in going into this, uh, coming into the year, we. Weren't sure what our capacity would be, especially if we went into a blended model in terms of being able to offer more than one section of. Music for our, um, avid music students. And so students were previously limited to one, um, music class, uh, per year. And now, um, beginning in quarter two, we're going to be able to expand our course offerings. And that's coming up in a couple of weeks here. So what does that mean? It means that students who are currently enrolled in a music class. Uh, will be able to take early bird sessions. Or if they have a full schedule, they'll be able to take advantage of a music class that's offered on one of their applied learning days. Or if a student, uh, especially our, our, uh, eleventh and twelfth graders who may be, uh, ahead in, in, um, credits and has a free period. They'll be able to, um, capitalize on learning opportunities by taking a music class during that free period as well. So, uh, we're really pleased to be offering that, um, to serve, to, to students. And then also in terms of limited, uh, in-person instruction. We are in the planning phases of that. Um, as Dr. Sprouls mentioned earlier. We are just starting to pilot limited in-person instruction for our students who need academic interventions. And once we have a better, um, idea of what our capacity is, we'll start bringing back. Small cohorts of students, uh, of music students. Now what that could look like, it could be anything, um, from a, a one-to-one ratio to up to cohorts of ten. So let's go ahead and shift to elementary. Right now, uh, we are offering, uh, fifth grade orchestra, uh, and remember, or a fifth grade orchestra. Those are second-year students or, or year-two students who start orchestra as fourth graders. And so they're currently meeting virtually. Also, uh, we will be, um. Launching our fourth grade orchestra and fifth grade band, um, band. Uh, we have a plan for that. We'll do November, uh, recruitment with December. I should be able to do this since I'm controlling the slides right now. All right. So with, with, I have a, I have a, uh, itchy trigger finger on my, um. On my mouse, I guess. So, uh, nonetheless, uh, December, uh, is when we're going to be, uh. Distributing instruments and then we'll start classes virtually. In January or rehearsals virtually in January. And we're also pleased to, to share that, um. Students from Edge will be able to participate this on, in this as well. And we're also in the planning phase to roll out choir and that will also be virtual. So that being said, um, we really are doing our best to maximize. Uh, learning opportunities and, and take advantage of learning or create learning opportunities, uh, for music. Although, um, the rollout was a little bit slow as we started in CDL at the beginning of the year, but. Students will have more opportunities to really engage with music and the arts. So we know that this, that's important.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd just like to.
Perry, you have anything to add?
Thank you. Um, I just want to close out with a couple of things. I know what's, one thing that's really hard. Though there's multiple things that are really hard in our community, but it's really hard for our music parents. To see athletes practicing. And they would like to do some of that after-school work as well. And we've pushed in on this multiple times. Uh, but it's clearly, um, the, the guidance is it's curricular and it's under ODE. So we know that's hard and have been trying to figure out how, how can we unstick that and just haven't, um, been able to. Um, and then the other thing I want to say, um, just out loud that, um, it's really hard for every one of our educators right now. While we hear many great stories, we also have, uh, lots of stories of how hard this is on our educators. And our classroom teachers who are trying to teach virtually. Um, I have done some poppin' of classes. And, um, I, it's hard, it's hard to teach, uh, first graders to read, uh, virtually. Um, so I want to say our, um, educators are, um, really, um, doing everything they can. And at the same time, we have to say to them. You can't, you can't be up all night, um, working to prepare. I, um, had a chance to, um, talk to an educator from another district who didn't know who I was. Who, uh, described the amount of planning it took for a, um, seven hour or seven hours of planning for two hours of teaching. Um, she was a special education teacher, so had to have really specially designed instruction. And she says, I know I'll get better. So, um, what I want to say is that, um, it's really important for our community. To really have, um, again, tons of support for our educators who are on the front line with kids. Um, and then the other thing I think I'd be remiss in not mentioning is that. It isn't just licensed staff. It's every educator in our district right now. Um, and the way they're showing up for kids and the way they're working and the way they're coming in and doing the work. No one ever predicted, um, we'd be where we are. And no one ever predicted it would last this long once we got into it. Um, I had the opportunity to, um, hear a little, um, bit about the change cycle. And usually, um, when you're managing large-scale change, like, uh, changing the, um, education model that's been in place for two hundred years. You wouldn't be in this flux of change, not knowing what your outcome was going to be and when it was going to end. And that makes it really hard on the psyche of, um, our educators who are showing up, um, every day for our kids. So, um, anything you can do as, um, board or community or we as a district. Um, our, our job one is, uh, to make sure we, uh, care for our frontline workers. And our frontline workers are those, uh, people that are in front of our kids every day. So with that, we can open it up to questions.
Well, thank you Superintendent Perry. Is there any questions that maybe we can see everybody's face and? Yeah, Vice Chair Bethel, and then we'll go to Director Goss.
Yeah, so I really appreciate the update specifically around sports because that's kind of a, been a big, uh, sticking point for a lot of our parents in the community. And I guess I didn't hear, and maybe I missed it, but. Uh, what are we doing for middle school sports? Um, it's, it's not news that I have a couple of kiddos and. I was notified today through the grapevine that, uh, we're not going to host seventh grade volleyball. And I would just like to know what efforts are being done for those lower age kids because. I don't think it's fair if we can do these things at high school that we're not equally giving that same opportunity to the middle school level.
Perry, do you have an update on that? Or Gregory on?
Yes, I can speak to that a little bit. I've, um, some middle school. I've spoken with, uh, some of the middle school, um, principals and Mr. Biani, the middle school director. They are looking at ways, the same thing to get access. For our students at the middle school level to also be able to work out. And to be able to have that connection. So, so they are planning and, and working out the logistics and how they can make that happen. It's a little bit more difficult in terms of how we make that operationalize with, um, students having to find transportation to do that. So we're just trying to get access, but we're definitely in the works of also having opportunities for middle school kids. I also have a middle school boy and he got a. Notification today that Parrish is going to start later this month, starting to do some workouts. So I think it's definitely, I know it's rolling because I've been in those meetings and I know. I personally received the message today, uh, from my student that goes to Parrish. And I have an update for you, Director Bethel. Um, so middle, middle school season one begins, uh, October twenty-sixth. And goes through November thirteenth. And at this point, what I see in that plan is cross-country football, eighth grade volleyball. For session one, session two is seventh grade volleyball. Track. Football and eighth grade volleyball again. And then in session three would be, um. Wrestling, track and field, right, and, uh, seventh grade volleyball. So that season one at this point is. October twenty-sixth through, um, November thirteenth. So we do have plans and what we need to do is, uh, I'll circle back with. Those that, who are organizing this and ensure that we have strong communication to families.
Thank you. Yay.
Want to add one thing. Sorry, Director Shonda Gary, but, um, we also have to remember a lot of our coaches are teachers. So we have to be really ca- careful about how we roll things out because we know they also have to be really good at CDL and that's a big new learning. So, but yes, we're working it.
Director Goss.
So I just want to say that had to be a scheduling nightmare of all time. Around the city to find staff and rooms and the right kids and mix them all together. But on top of thanking staff and students, we owe our parents a huge hooray. I mean, they've been able to, to mix that in with work hours and childcare and neighbors and. A whole host of things. So, um. Superintendent, you've done a wonderful job and so have the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. It's almost like an airline booking. Go ahead, Director LePold.
Oh, I was just doing sign language. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments before we can take a little break, about three minutes break? If you don't mind. Yeah. All right, let's take a three-minute break.
Are we coming back?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Please don't go anywhere. It's a three-minute. Bio-break or stretching break, whatever you want to call it. Keeping good timing. You're almost there.
So our next slide, I just wanted to clarify something, uh, Chair Shonda Gary. Is, uh, actually information and then public comments, the very last thing.
Okay. So let's go to the information. Uh, the next board, uh, meeting will be on October twenty-seventh. It's going to be a work session. Right? Work session.
Correct.
And the budget committee process, the budget committee, uh, I think we are needing three members if I'm right. Application deadline is five PM Friday, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty. We would really welcome our community members to consider applying. And, uh. So there'll be three vacancies and we would like to. Welcome our community to participate and join us in that. Having said that, let's go to the last, uh, ninth item in our agenda. This is a public comment section. This is a public comment section for the non agenda items. This section of the public comment is for items not necessarily related to the agenda. Yeah, one half hour of the total time designated for this section. And I'm going to ask Miss McDaniel and Erin to see if there is any non agenda item, public comments.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Shandary. We have two written comments we wanted to read first because we only have two of those. I believe we have two videos and not knowing how many callers at this point.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The two written comments that we have are about removal of SROs. The first one is from Elizabeth Yetsey Sale. She's a community member here in Salem. And she says, in the interest of providing a safe and equitable learning environment for Salem area students, I respectfully request removal of SROs from Salem Kaiser schools. A call for Danielle Bethel to denounce the Proud Boys and the Three Percenters, along with the white nationalist movement as a whole. The final comment we have is from Brett Stoner Osborne here in Salem, community member. Our BIPOC community members and students have been abundantly clear. SROs in schools are bad idea, even if they are forming relationships with some of the students. If their presence makes any students at all feel unsafe, then they shouldn't be at the schools. Students shouldn't be arrested as part of the school disciplinary process, especially since those sentences are likely to be harsher for students of color. We need to remove SROs from the schools and commit resources toward the development of counselors and mental health services as an alternative to deal with struggling students that don't involve incarceration or arresting.
All right. Thank you.
And then Erin.
Yeah. So are we moving on to video or?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two video.
If there are callers, let's go through the callers. Poor thing, they have been waiting so long.
We will go to callers. So let me get them in. Okay, so Isaiah, we have brought you into the meeting now. And if you could start by providing your first and last name and city of residence, then you may begin.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Before I begin, I need it to be known that this emotion you're used to hearing in my voice, it is not mere anger, it is fear. I need it to be understood that every board meeting, I'm also scared, absolutely terrified of speaking, of providing my name because I know what kind of people members of this boards are friends with. I've met them. I've seen what they do to people who stand up to them and I know what they'd like to do to me. But they want to do even worse to my students and refuse to hide when my students put their lives on the line. So my name is Isaiah Swan. I'm in IA Lamb Elementary and I live in Kaiser, Oregon. May I begin?
Please.
Being anti racist is about examining your own biases and how you show up for our historically underserved and marginalized students. It's about understanding racism and what it means to be a student of color in our district. And it's about actively understanding the culture and community you serve. I commit to providing the deliberate community centered process related to the SRO contracts that supports all students. Specifically, our black students, our queer students, our Latinx students, our indigenous students, our students with disabilities, our transgender students, our Micronesian students, our immigrant students, and every other child that we have the privilege to welcome into our school. Be learners with an open heart in that process. Superintendent Perry, June 23rd. Satya, other school boards don't have literal white supremacists as members. Marty and Kathy literally said tonight some of the most racist things I've ever heard in person and none of y'all said a single word. What words would you like me to use for this cruelty? What pleasantness hasn't earned, Satya? If you were open, if you were welcoming, if you wanted a safe and equitable school district, you would actually listen to your constituents. And instead you move to increasingly silence them every Tuesday night. Instead, you willingly share political interests and power over my students' lives with a blatant white supremacist, with a fascist-linked transphobe, with a bought and paid-for conservative opportunist prioritizing her political ambitions over the interests of her constituents, with a man who performed in blackface and is as silent and complacent on these issues as you and with Goss. And I and every one of the respectful members of our community would hire any one of those kids in a heartbeat. They know right from wrong. Jesse Lipold, say trans rights. Jesse, it is not a lie that you've been transphobic. It is not a lie that you willingly attended a Proud Boy event last year. It is a lie that you shouldn't have been expected to know what kind of people this event was for, considering its attendees were proudly declaring what kind of people they were on stage. Jesse, you willingly shared a room and a platform with violent white supremacists espousing fascist ideals and didn't realize how horrific it was that you and those bigots had anything in common. Hold yourself accountable. Danielle Bethel denounced the Three Percenters, denounced Proud Boys and Patriot Pair. Bethel, when asked who your top three campaign donors were, you named an organization that hasn't publicly donated a single dollar and didn't name the $65,000 donated to you by Oregon Right to Life and their associate. Bethel, you're so scared of our BIPOC community that where your competitor, Premier and County Commissioner, Ashley Carson Collingham, proudly listens to and marches alongside it, you won't even attend a Zoom meeting in which it has any power or authority. You, Satya, Kylo, Lipold and Goss can't serve a community you won't hear. Resign, all of you. Superintendent Perry, where were you when your district insisted that loose students who wished to attend the SRO Task Force, that they spent years dragging this district, kicking and screaming to setting up to do so in person and indoors in the midst of a pandemic? Where were you when your district suddenly insisted they would not let these students, these children participate in the task force they instigated unless they signed confidentiality agreements? This is not a game. This is not some high school civics project. This is our students fighting for our lives and where are you? Isaiah Swan, IA Lamb Elementary. Stand up, earn your accolades, be better than them. Our students already are. Thank you.
But thank you very much. Who is our next caller, please?
Yes, our next caller is Elizabeth. And just trying to get her to unmute. Okay, so we also have, let's see, Bethany on the call. So Bethany, are you there?
Yep.
Okay, so if you could begin with your first and last name and city of residence, please.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Bethany Lowberg and I live in Salem, 97301.
Thank you.
Bethany, you may want to put your video on mute or something. So the delay gets kind of a, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was confused, but yeah. So Bethany Lowberg, and I grew up in Salem. I graduated from North Salem High School. And I currently work as youth ministry leader at Salem Midnight Church. And I serve as the chair of the board of the Oregon Fellowship of Reconciliation. And I watched the school board meeting last month as the board unanimously approved a resolution for safe and welcoming schools. This this resolution acknowledges the trauma caused by systemic racism. For students most impacted by systemic racism to feel safe in Salem Kaiser Public Schools, police must not have a presence in schools. I stand with BIPOC youth calling for the removal of SROs from our schools in Salem Kaiser. And I believe that their testimonies, which they have shared over and over, speak loudly for themselves. I also want to call on Director Bethel to denounce white nationalist groups, including Proud Boys and Three Percenters. These groups wish not only for the oppression but the elimination of our BIPOC community members and our hate groups. And hate cannot provide safety and welcome. Also, as a member of the Fellowship of Reconciliation and as a peacebuilding practitioner, with a master's degree in conflict transformation, I know that there are many other creative options for meeting the needs of all students that exist in being practiced around our country and world. So we have the imagination and the capacity. And I think also the the youth of Lieutenant Sampe has outlined many ways to reinvest in students and in education. I want to share a quote from a chapter titled Creating Safety for Ourselves in the book Colorizing Restorative Justice, which was written by Johanna Turner, professor of restorative justice of the思想 justice and peacebuilding where I studied my masters. I think it it speaks powerfully to the need to reimagine safety. Say her name, say his name, say their names. The spirits of black and brown people killed by police officers bear witness, the police is a common source of danger rather than a prevailing source of protection within many of our communities. In some situations, calling the police even when we need help can result in greater violence. For example, the police murder of a loved one experiencing a mental health crisis or the deportation of an undocumented immigrant family. How can we secure our own safety, given that government institutions for keeping the peace have never functioned for our safety, freedom and self determination? This question is not new and our communities have been innovating answers for centuries. As people committed to a human justice that resists oppression in all its forms, we inherit this legacy. And as it does before us, it is crucial that we not only rethink our journey towards justice, but also reimagine our strategies for safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lowberg. Erin, who is our next caller?
Sure. So I'm going to try again to see if Elizabeth will can unmute. Otherwise, we'll, we don't have any other callers waiting and we can move on to the video comments.
Is Elizabeth still able to unmute and join us or no?
I'm trying, but not quite getting a response yet.
All right, let's go to the video callers, please.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Riley Harrigan and I live in Salem. I have three kids, two of which are in the Salem Kaiser School system. As a parent, I feel parents have been edged out of their children's education. No one seems to care what I think or feel as a parent. No one cares what I want for my children. I feel as though parents are seen only as caretakers when kids aren't in school. I'm placated with promises of parent focus groups or other ways for input that never materialize. Today, school isn't about school anymore, at least when you look at the board meetings. It appears to me that the board largely is trying to put in the work to make meaningful impacts. But they're sniped at with distractions by those who seem to have a political agenda instead of the goal of all students graduating prepared for success in life. I can't afford a private education for my three kids. I need public school that I pay taxes for to work for me. Yet, time and again, the system seeks to do things that I and many others disagree with. We, as parents, try to communicate by emails, which largely go unanswered. So we turn to the school board meeting, which now appears overrun with groups all saying the same things, who have figured out how to game the public comment opportunities and silence as many as they can. As a parent, I'm tired of worrying about what my children's teachers are going to say. I'm tired of worrying about where the curriculum came from or the revisionist books they're being made to read when there are respected and longstanding repositories of knowledge and literature. I'm tired of worrying about what's on a poster or on a window display or a T shirt that only serves to virtue signal, divide and marginalize students. Everything 2020 is bringing us is already stressful. And let's not add to the emotional and psychological stress that is already built into growing up in normal times. Quit taking advantage of opportunities to advance an agenda because at the core, you're just taking advantage of kids when you're supposed to be giving the advantage to kids and preparing them for success in life instead of preparing them for a life of division and strife. Let's get beyond these petty political discussions. Let's open schools, support all students, keep SROs in the schools, make data informed decisions on changes to policy with metrics to know whether they succeed or fail and get back to the business of educating our kids in ways that enable them to work for and value their futures instead of feeling entitled to something that someone else owes them. And lastly, congratulations to Chair Chandragiri, who is the director for my zone and to Vice Chair Bethel on their elections to their leadership positions. The elections by the board of Dr. Chandragiri, an Indian immigrant who worked hard to get where he is to a leadership position, should tell everyone who keeps saying negative things about this board that they don't know what they're talking about. Thanks for this opportunity to speak.
Okay, I'm going to try Elizabeth again because she tried to rejoin. So Elizabeth. Yes, we can hear you.
Go ahead. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. That was happening. Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Swan. I live in Kaiser, Oregon. I have worked as a fed IA in this district. Phone policing is racism. Only listening to people who speak the way you like is white supremacy. Expectations of so-called professionalism is white supremacy. Marty has threatened people. She just threatened students tonight, saying they will go to jail for their behavior in the so-called real world. Kathy Kathy is threatening students tonight, saying they won't get jobs if they keep calling him like he do. Those were some of the most overtly white racist, white supremacist statements they could have made there. You all keep being racist every meeting. Why don't you start by holding each other accountable instead of worrying about how loudly yelled at you over the phone? You all talk about being anti bullying and not letting yourself be bullied. You are adults in local office. You have the power in this situation and you keep acting anti-black, anti-indigenous, anti-people of color, anti-L G T Q I A and anti-students with disabilities. You do the bullying. You skew hate every meeting, but I guess as long as you do it civilly, it's fine with you. How can we constituents stop you all from calling into these meetings with your overt and continuous racism? This board must end all SRO contracts. Salem Police Department's pause does not change your responsibilities as a board. We know you all are pro-police. We know Shandra Giri is an anti-no reader who believes in imaginary violence on the part of our students to justify the actual violence he perpetuates through his policies and gaslighting. We know. Christie Perry, what are you thinking? Asking BIPOC students to sit in a physical room during a pandemic that is disproportionately affecting their families, asking them to recount their traumas while their abusers are in the room and then asking underage students to sign a confidentiality contract so they can't speak out publicly against the further abuse that occurs? That is not very anti-racist of you Superintendent of the Year. Neither is sitting on this meeting tonight and not saying a word as board members say horrifically racist things. Bethel is my zone's representative and I would like her to resign. She has demonstrated nothing but disdain for our students. She declined to participate in a BIPOC-led candidate forum because of losing participation. She's scared of students of color. There's no other way to describe this than racism and white supremacy. How do you feel about Three Percenters, Proud Boys, Patriot Pair? Do you want to denounce them? If you do, you'll have to denounce your friend Marty too. Kathy Goss, you think it's your job to teach your community to act civil, but you refuse to speak out against your fellow board members for being openly racist. And do you understand yet why your desire to stop feeding our children is wrong on every level? Marty Ham embodies white supremacy. Every time she tries to deny it, she ends up doing the exact opposite. Students are speaking out against racially armed people abusing them in school halls and you and your friends are scared of being called racist. Paul Kylo performed in blackface. Jesse Lipold has yet to honestly address the transphobia. He sympathizes with Proud Boys. He is more interested in power than change. Six out of seven members of this board are fundamentally unfit for office and the rest of y'all on this call need to use your voice. Honestly, we all heard racist, hateful speech tonight from our board members and y'all just let it happen. And Sharon Bossy, you agree with Kathy Goss's racism tonight? You didn't speak up. You're complicit.
Ms. Swan, I really appreciate. So thank you very much. Who's our next caller, please?
Yeah, so I believe we just have one final video and I'll get that queued up.
All right.
Director Chandra Giri, Vice Chair Bethel and members of the board. My name is Courtney Clendenning and I reside in Kaiser, Oregon. I'm here today to paint a small picture of the life of a teacher in Salem Kaiser schools today and ask that you please consider taking the nonessential demands off of teachers' plates, evaluate the time spent in live sessions and provide more protected time for teachers to plan and prepare for our students so we can be at our best to serve them and lead their learning. I have been teaching first grade in Salem Kaiser for 20 years. I consider myself quite tech savvy, someone always willing to do extra without complaint and someone who is always open to new learning. Let me start by telling you everything that is new to my teaching this year. Canvas, Florida Virtual, Zoom, Google Slides, Jamboard, Loom, Cami, embedded video, posting recorded class sessions for later viewing and new this week, a conference scheduler. I have been spending 60 to 80 hours per week just to stay. I have been spending 60 to 80 hours per week just to stay above water, 10 to 12-hour workdays and my weekends. What have I been doing with that time, you ask? In addition to teaching, I have been learning how to effectively use all of the new curriculum and platforms mentioned earlier, providing tech support to families, connecting with families who are not showing up to class to see how I can support them, uplifting colleagues who are drowning and questioning their value as teachers, rebooting crash technology, attending IEP transition meetings, writing tag plans, contacting translation services, conducting one-on-one interviews with students to complete informal assessments to guide my instruction, administering district-required assessments one-on-one with students by Friday's deadline, engaging in self-paced professional development, attending professional development provided by others, posting links for to assignments for the week, crying, quickly wiping away the tears and getting back to work, scoring and responding to student work in a timely fashion, 100 to 150 submissions each day, grabbing a granola bar to eat while I respond to emails since I didn't get a lunch, posting links to music and PE classes, communicating about login changes with families, communicating with parents about required attendance in PE and music, sending my Zoom link to the counselor who wants to visit my students, submitting daily attendance based on either seeing faces at live sessions, documentation from families, or completion of work, entering my PD hours to get PDUs for license renewal, reading and responding in a timely fashion to communication from parents, admin, the tech department, our instructional mentor, the SED Department Specialist Mentor Reading Specialist, sending my own family to bed, knowing I might not get to sleep until 2:00 AM if I'm lucky, and planning. Just like my daily routine, I don't actually have time to tell you about the planning part of my day. However, I did send it to you in an email. I beg of you, listen to your teachers. My story is one of many. We are tired. We are weary. We are suffering. Our families are suffering. Our mental health is suffering. We cannot keep going at this pace. We have been sprinting the first three miles of a marathon. This pace is not sustainable. We need relief, and we need it now.
Okay, we do not have any more videos or callers.
Yeah, you know, for the sake of time, we may have to move further if there are any return submissions. Hey, request our fellow board directors, please read them. And we can make sure. Let's quickly go through our a quick wrap-up of board activities. You know, it has been a long day for all of us and for our community. So thank you very much for bearing with us. So Director Goss, do you have anything to? The board activity report? I can't unmute, please.
To go off there.
Oh, there you are.
If I do my spacebar. Anyway, no, I don't at this time.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bethel.
I just have a couple of short things. One, I want to say thank you to Dr. Chandragiri and to Superintendent Perry for setting up the OSBA implicit bias training that we had on Friday. It was, it was absolutely amazing. Several hours that we spent together. I loved, loved the presenter. I'm really tired, sorry. It was a great training. We had great conversation after Superintendent Perry and I on and some things, and I hope that we can do the next one. I just, hearing Courtney, just want to say that, wow, I mean, wow. They, I mean, there's no words other than thank you to the teachers. I know Courtney personally, and I've I talked to her often just as a friend, and it's crazy. I have a question that you can answer for me later, Superintendent Perry, but what is what is nonessential demands look like? I'm really curious what we can be doing to try to help them pivot in a way that helps them be successful, because I know that their breakdown will be my children's breakdown. And how do we support them? I know you guys are actively working on that as an administration team because you shared that, but if there's something we we parents, because you know, we're doing a lot, but if there's something more we can be doing, I hope there's a way that we can work together. Because I am, I'm heartbroken to see her and hear her, and I know that that is the same story across the district. So that's all I.
Let's, let's go to Director LePaul.
I mean, I just wanted to, you know, thank Danielle, Director Bethel, for her question as well, because I'd like to hear that as well. And I mean, just also, just from talking with some students out of McKay, because we we do a bunch of stuff out there, and you know, they they were talking to me as this new school year came out, and that's they were telling similar things. Like, man, our teachers are working their butts off, basically is what they were saying, and you know, they felt really bad for their teachers, as well as like, they're like, I mean, this also sucks for us, but it also our teachers are putting in a lot of work, and so on our teachers to know that your students are seeing you if they're not saying it to you directly. But then, as far as board activities, man, it's been like two months, and I'm sure we did a lot of things. We went, Director Bethel and I went to Waldo Middle School for the ribbon cutting. That was super fun. You know, went and toured the place. Director Bethel went there, so she gave us an inside scoop, and it was really cool to see our bond dollars being used and how we and how we're using it effectively. It was cool to see the in-person logistical changes, like, for example, in science rooms. We have movable tables that are multi-purpose instead of the big old-fashioned blocked ones. And so it was really cool to see the innovation of little changes that we've made to create better educational spaces. I just hope we could use them sooner. And now, beyond that, I had just two more things. One of them is, back in July, I asked a board to make commitment with a deadline for the SRO to have a decision. I didn't say which way for you to go. I just said, we need, we got to reach a decision and look at the backs by August 28th. I mean, of course, that time came and went, and the board said the district was going to take care of it, and we were told, I was told there's going to be a report in September. The report in September said we need more time, and now we are three months later from that initial time, and I haven't seen or heard anything much, very much. I've heard a little bit, but of vagaries, but not much from the district or from the board leadership. And so I do want to remind us that we made a commitment for August, and it is now October. And so it's really important, I think, for us to get this done, because it's on a lot of people's minds. And so I would like to hear in the superintendent's report or later from the superintendent and from board leadership, what's being done, where we're at, what we're doing, where we're going. I think that would be important. One last, one last thing for myself. I mean, of course, I read a lot of books because I think it's important to learn, and I just decided that it might be good to say this as a board, just because culture, I think, is important. And so I began reading, we hear a lot about this anti-racist theory, right, but it all started from Inbermex Candy's book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, right, and that's kind of what kickstarted the whole thing. And so just like, you see a ton of articles about it, and you hear people talk about it, but that's not the same as the meat and potatoes. So I was like, man, I'm gonna start reading this book. And so, I mean, of course, I've read a lot of books about race relations and things like that, and there's a lot of really good ones out there, but I just started reading this. And I'd like just once a month, just to make a quick insight to what I'm learning. And in the beginning, I think it was really important, something that I took from it was, he was talking about his definition of racism, or anti-racism, which is really interesting, because he said, when you hear it in the news, right, we take it to how it's defined now. But he says in this introduction, I'd love to quote it, but it's way over there. But he talks about how the, we use it now as like an insult to like attack people, but when he's saying, thanks, something's racist, he's not meaning you're an awful person, which, I mean, maybe in some cases, but you know, he's saying something that is racist, right, which he would, he was kind of referring to as like, he was trying to bring the word racism back to its original term, was kind of what he was referring to. And then anti-racist, right, would be anything against that, which makes a lot of sense. The one point where I would push back on him was just when he says, just because he's trying to turn the word back to its original definition, and I could be straight up wrong, but this works messy, so, you know, we gotta learn as we go. My one thing would, I would say, if our goal is to bring us together and to repair relationships, I would say maybe split his term racist, like racist, racist, into like intentionally racist and unintentionally racist. So that way, when you tell someone, hey, you're being racist, you're not, people don't take it as the word is today, which is like, you're an awful person, we hate you, which is kind of how some people take it, and I, some people will be like, oh, I disagree, but that's, some people do take it that way. And so if you say, it's like a couple of extra syllables to let people know, hey, you're being intentionally racist, or, hey, I believe you're being unintentionally racist, because then we can be like, oh, okay, how can I fix that problem? But I'm gonna keep reading the book, and I might change my mind, but I just, that was one takeaway for me.
All right. Director Blassey, do you have anything to add?
Just real quick, Jessica, I think one of the things you're referring to, you're, it sounds like you're also possibly talking about implicit bias, the unintentional side of racism. So if I, if you've taken the OSBA training on that yet, that Danielle was referring to. If you haven't had a chance yet, it's incredibly enlightening. I've taken it a few times through the state of Oregon, and every time I take it, I realize things that I'm doing that I wasn't aware that I was doing, and you know, and I like to think that I'm not, you know. But, but I'm reminded of, you know, sometimes my words and actions could be misunderstood, or I'm not even aware, just that lack of self-awareness. So I think that's kind of what you're getting at, and I appreciate that you're you're reading that. But if you have a chance to take one of those classes where they walk you through your own thought process, and it's really, really eye-opening. And anyway, board report, also to your comment, and I'm sure Superintendent will talk about where we are in the process, but, you know, I've been attending the student-led meetings, the student-led committee meetings on school safety and looking at the SRO issue, and and what I will say about that, not not about the content, but just watching the students and learning from from them and how they approach a complex issue has been an eye-opener, and it does restore my my face in the world, I think, right now, to see these young, really, really thoughtful individuals taking on a really tough issue and being mindful about it and looking at it from the entire perspective and their approach to it. So for me, it's been an incredible learning experience, just watching them navigate this issue. So that's where I've spent some of my time. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Kylo? I can't hear you.
That's because I had gotten lost. I've just been representing the board at the committees that you've assigned me to and representing other people at their meetings. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hyun?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I I am also very concerned about what our teachers are going through and also our kids. I've heard of some kids falling asleep, some kids having several hour breaks between activities, and, you know, how this affects our families and everything. And Director LePaul is right, we need to get this SRO issue back on the boardroom with a discussion and a recommendation. It's been too long. That's it.
Well, thank you very much. I've been busy. To say that, I, you know, I really appreciate an opportunity to do what I'm doing and to serve our community and to kind of be in this moment. So thank you very much. We've been busy. We've been having some very courageous conversations, very difficult issues. And it sometimes feels like when the whole Titanic is sinking, doesn't matter if you're in upper deck, lower deck, middle deck, wherever it is, everybody's hurting and everybody's suffering, and sometimes there's a tendency for all kinds of emotions to go back and forth. But, you know, for me, it's a blessing to have an amazing board, Superintendent Perry, and the leadership that we are keeping the ship rotating. So I've been busy. I've been doing a little bit of my work. And, you know, in addition to taking your patience, I'm hope I'm doing my part and serving. The training, you know, as a board, I really appreciate our board and Superintendent Perry for supporting us. You know, in the beginning, we decided we'll deliver a few things, and we have delivered. We had a retreat and where we had some very good courageous conversations, completed a board self-assessment, which will guide us in how we'll be really data and evidence-based, how we'll move charter course forward. Then we had amazing training on implicit bias, no shame, no blame, no guilt, kind of just looking at it so that we all can kind of wear our rearview mirror and just look at the gaps we have. And all of us have implicit biases. That's, you know, even the best driver needs a rearview mirror. That's what I learned. So I really think we are going in the right direction. It's, it's really painful to hear all the communities suffering, the teachers suffering. But, you know, I have confidence in our board. I have confidence in our leadership in the district. We will get through this. We will work hard, and I see amazing board members who've been really doing a good job. And just for me to get to work with all of you and work with different community leaders, even though people may approach it differently, but the end result, we all mean the same. We all want the same. For me, to have that opportunity itself is a great thing. So I've been busy. I've been reading. I've been communicating with all of you and with the board, Superintendent Perry, and trying to understand the complex issues. So thank you very much. Did I miss anybody? So we'll go to Superintendent Perry and tell us all the good things you've been doing, and you've been doing great things, don't worry. I can't hear you.
Too late. I, it's, I've muted. It's too late. So I just want to end with, rather than an activity report, I just wanted to do a recognition that we had Indigenous Peoples' Day Monday and just do a little why that's important. So history is told from a certain point of view, and I've talked about how we have some curriculum materials that don't really tell the full story of our history. So Columbus Day represents the commemoration of Columbus landing in Americas. But if you think and put yourselves in the shoes of our indigenous people living here, this was not a joyous event of discovery. So for those indigenous people who have endured mass infection, slavery, and genocide at the hands of the European colonizers, this event was a horrific tragedy that marked the beginning of centuries of ongoing destruction of native languages, cultures, and people. Therefore, on this day, we choose to celebrate in the honor of the history, the cultures, and the identities of our indigenous students and families whose ancestors have remained resilient and steadfast through centuries of the most abject horrors and systematic attempts at assimilation and elimination. And we choose to celebrate the languages, the cultural practices, the viewpoints, the histories, and the unique, and the unique gifts of all of our indigenous students and families bring to our schools and our community. So and then just lastly, since it was indigenous people, I just want to acknowledge that the land that the school district is located on was once the land of our native people, and we honor that land now that has been entrusted to us and to ensure that all of our students have a better future in our community, and we want to honor our indigenous people and the rich history of them on Indigenous Peoples' Day 2020, which was yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you. I think with that, our meeting is adjourned, right?
So.
Good night. Thank you for being awake and stay so up so late. Bye-bye.